This is not something that might work, this is not something that can work, this will work. And it's going to work with the partnership, with all of you, with the men and women that are behind us. There is a commitment here, citywide, to make this happen, as it has been alluded to, not just with the CRA, but we are in negotiations on two other project labor agreements because we believe that this is just good business. It makes sense.
Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll on the vote before us. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That passes unanimously. And joining us now by phone is Public Works Director of the Bureau of Contract Administration, John Reamer. Mr. Reamer, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate the welcome.
Before we talk about the project labor agreement, explain for our viewers, if you would, what the Bureau of Contract Administration does and what are the programs it oversees?
Fantastic. Well, actually, the title that I hold is "Head of Inspector of Public Works." And the Bureau of Contract Administration, we're one of five operating bureaus in the Department of Public Works, and we oversee contracts, both construction and some personal services contracts, that are awarded through the Board of Public Works. So for construction, all work that's done in the public right-of-way by private contractors, we have men and women that serve as the construction managers, if you will. They inspect the work to make sure that it's done according to the plans and the specifications. They issue payments to contractors, and then they officially close out the project through the Board of Public Works.
Now, the project labor agreement that we invited John to talk about, CRA, I know, is involved. We know there may be some other participants. What role will they be playing in this project?
Well, with the project labor agreement, the Community Redevelopment Agency, they asked our bureau to partner with them to monitor certain aspects of the project labor agreement. In essence, what it does is it's a partnering effort with the building trades, the developer, and the agency that's administering either the funds of the contract, to create an environment where, A, you have a level playing field, B, you're able to deliver projects on time and on budget, and C, there's a component in there that we're quite interested and excited about, which is to allow for a local hire. Those men and women who live in the city of Los Angeles, specifically in certain zip code areas that have been identified as disadvantaged from the standpoint of there's a high unemployment rate, or there are other criteria that we are looking at from the standpoint of being a disadvantaged person, either you are a homeless individual, or you're unemployed, or you've had a negative impact with the legal system. This enables us to interject you, if you will, or provides you an avenue into a career path with the building trades and construction.
Well, how is this going to work? Who's going to be eligible for these jobs? And especially tell us about the training and apprentice component of the agreement that you were referring to.
We're working with community-based organizations, we're working with faith-based organizations, the Community Development Department has been partnering with us also, and men and women in the city of Los Angeles, those who are looking for something different, something new, are all welcome to come and participate in this effort. You know, when you have construction that's funded with public monies, the state of California has a few laws that we have to adhere to. One is that the contractor must pay what's called a prevailing wage rate. And that means that whether it's a union contractor or a non-union contractor, a certain rate must be paid. And this is an attempt to, if you will, once again, level the playing field. Another requirement is also for there to be, of all the hours worked on the project, 20% of those hours must go to apprentice labor. Those men and women who, they're not the expert, if you will, the journey-level worker, but they're just starting, they're learning about the trade, the craft, be it a laborer, electrician, or a plumber, or an operating engineer. And so we are specifically targeting those men and women to come into the trades. As with most industries, the baby boomers are starting to retire. Construction is one of them, and so there is a huge demand right now to bring in new workers who can not only do this work, but want to do this work. The challenge that we found is that because the school systems do not have in place things that were there when I was coming through, by the time I was in the eighth grade, I had already taken a woodshop class and a metal shop class, home economics. So I had, if you will, an introduction into the crafts. That doesn't unfortunately exist today in our school system. So we're working with community organizations to access what's called apprenticeship prep programs, where young men and women are able to go through an eight-to-a-ten-week course to give them an introduction into the trades, and from there, we bridge them into the building trade apprenticeship program. These apprenticeship programs are approved by the state of California, so they've already demonstrated a career path and different stages that you go through to elevate or promote, if you will, from level one to level five before you turn out or promote as a journey-level worker.
So what you're talking about is bringing up people who perhaps are undereducated, certainly don't have the skills, and also giving them the expertise in that particular job area, as well as teaching them what it's like to have a job?
Most certainly. This is going to afford many people. And again, the goal that we have, because there are those who would think, "Well, you're just limited to those who live in the city of L.A." Well, quite frankly, there is a huge amount of construction that's taking place right now in many of the departments. So the particular policy that was passed the other day is with the Community Redevelopment Agency, the Department of Public Works, we also have project labor agreements. There are a few at the harbor, and there's one at the Los Angeles World Airport. So this is something that's throughout the region, and we believe, A, it's going to help ensure an opportunity for those men and women to come into this construction profession.
I'm sure there may be somebody watching who's saying, "Wait a minute, you're going to build the airport with apprentice labor? Is that safe?"
Yeah, really. No, in our project labor agreement, there's one thing that we, and I'm one who has made sure that this is something that we hold to, is we are not going to lower our standards. That's one of the reasons why the apprenticeship prep programs have become so important. We just don't have the luxury, especially in construction, because it can be, if it's not done properly, it can be unsafe. And I'm not saying that construction is unsafe, but if you don't know what you're doing, and if you have not been trained properly, you can find yourself in an unsafe environment. So no, this is not going to be a case where we build the airport, or we build a harbor, or a good portion of Public Works projects with inexperienced workers, but that's the reason why we like the concept of being able to utilize the apprenticeship program, because we're able to train men and women. They'll start at a certain level, and they'll promote through. Keep in mind, this is just 20% of all the labor, so 80%, these are journey-level workers. These are seasoned men and women who are very experienced, they're trained, they've been doing this for a long time. That's why we're happy about the concept of not just on time and on budget, but quality construction, so that the men and women who are paying taxes in the city of L.A., they're getting the quality construction that they deserve.
How many jobs do you think will actually be created in the Los Angeles area by this program? And you're talking about Los Angeles, not Orange, or Palmdale, or Lancaster, correct?
Right. Right now, this is in the city of Los Angeles, and, you know, how many jobs? It's hard to say right now. And the reason I say that is because we're just getting started. The CRA policy that was approved, it's partnering with the private development industry, and I can't say right now how many projects we'll be able to utilize with that. With the Department of Public Works, we're also drafting a department-wide project labor agreement where, well, I'll say right now, we have seven project labor agreements. And of the seven project labor agreements, I'm looking at a report that I have here, we have, oh, there you go, I found it. Of those seven, 1,400 individuals that live in the city of Los Angeles, since these projects started, and that's roughly June of 2005, have had an opportunity to work. And I like to coin the phrase, "An hour is an opportunity." Because when we refer to jobs in construction, sometimes people look at it from the standpoint of eight hours a day, five days a week, 4.3 weeks a month, for your 12 months to get a year, for 30 years. Construction doesn't work like that. Construction, A, can be cyclical, in that during your winter months, the weather is challenging, it may slow down a little bit, and then your summer months, it picks up. So construction measures your time based on hours, not necessarily based on the days, the weeks, and the months. So any hour that we provide someone is an opportunity for them to do two things: enhance their skills, but also make an impression on that contractor, and then they're able to work elsewhere. So we recognize that we're not going to be able to keep all of these men and women on City of Los Angeles projects. But what the city of Los Angeles is doing is we're taking the lead in preparing these men and women to not only work here, but then to branch out. And once you become a journey-level worker, you can take that journey-level card, and you can go anywhere in the United States, and you can show that you are a seasoned professional in construction and obtain a job.
When will we be seeing the apprentice training begin and the union jobs actually being filled?
It's happening now. The numbers that I alluded to in my testimony were numbers that are reflective of this effort on the part of the Department of Public Works. So when I made the statement that for the first quarter, we're in the process of producing our third-quarter report for this fiscal year '07-'08, which began July 1st, at the end of the first quarter, which was roughly September, the apprentice hours for those who live in the city of L.A. totaled 49,000 hours, plus or minus a few. At the end of the third quarter, we were up to 110,000 hours. Now, I'm really pleased about that, because what that tells me is that the partnership is working. And the, not just the partnership with the building trades, but the partnership with the community, the community-based organizations, the faith-based organizations, it is working, it can work, and it's going to do a fantastic job. The mayor right now, and the entire city family, is working to deal with this issue of gangs and creating alternatives and providing hope to those who would see themselves as being in hopeless situations. This is a key component in that, in my mind. I don't want to speak for the mayor, but in my mind it is, because it provides alternatives. Someone who doesn't feel that they have anything to do or any place to go, we're telling them, "You come to the building trade, we have a home for you. If you want to work and you want to learn, we can use you." And our numbers are testament to that.
Well, I think you've gotten the word out. John Reamer with Public Works, thank you for joining us here on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Again, the vote to go forward with the project labor agreement was unanimous. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. If you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213)473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 25th, 2008. On behalf of Roberto Campos and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
I'm John Walsh from America's Most Wanted. The Los Angeles Police Memorial Foundation is presenting their 37th Annual Celebrity Golf Tournament and Family Fun Day. This worthwhile event will be held at the Rancho Park Golf Course on Saturday, May 17th, in West Los Angeles. Gates open at 8:00 a.m. For more information, contact the foundation at (323)276-5970, or the website at lapmf.org. Remember, you can make a difference.
Hey, buddy! You with the stupid hat! Come here, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called!
Hey, look out for the pothole!
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to your city council meeting for Tuesday, April 29th, 2008. We congratulate the Los Angeles Lakers on their four-game sweep of the first round. And we're looking forward to meeting our next opponents, probably, maybe the Utah Jazz, but even if it's the Houston Rockets, we're, we are prepared. We meet here in the city council chambers every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We are televised live on Channel 35, and we welcome our viewers on Channel 35 through the city's cable system. We also are rebroadcast in the evening, and we're webcast online. If you're close to a computer, you can always go to la-city.org, and you can find out any of our old meetings and archive video footage. You can click on old agendas and get directly to the items of concern. We also are available through your telephones by calling using your phone the number 213-621-CITY. And that's a service called Council Phone, in which you can listen to any of the committees or full council meetings through your telephone as we meet. That's 213-621-CITY. Our agendas, which detail the items that we vote on each meeting, are available online, or in the city clerk's office, or here in council chambers. Those are made available 72 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance for our special items. If you'd like to speak on any of the items that are on the agenda, you can do that either in committee, or if it has not yet had a hearing in committee, here in council. Fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'd be happy to hear your testimony. You can also give testimony on items of a general nature that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction here in the city council. And just do the same thing, fill out a speaker card, give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and they will be able to get that to us and will hear your testimony. We also take testimony live from Van Nuys City Hall, where we have a video conferencing capability, so if you live closer to Van Nuys City Hall, feel free to stop in there and to give your testimony remotely from there. We meet each first Friday of the month in Van Nuys City Hall, so this Friday, we will be meeting there as well. I also want to mark this day as the 16th anniversary of the urban unrest of, happened here in Los Angeles 16 years ago today, so a notable day for that. We're waiting one more council member. In the meantime, if we can please have Councilmember Gruel, Alarcon, Weezer, or Weiss come down, we are waiting one of you four to establish 10 members or two-thirds of our body in a quorum to begin business. So again, Councilmember Alarcon, Councilwoman Gruel, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Weiss. It is now well past the hour, which according to council rules, council members need to be here. Please make your way down. We appreciate everybody's patience while we wait those council members to begin our meeting. Thank you. So, final quorum call for our remaining council members. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Weiss, please join us as soon as possible. If we don't have a quorum in two minutes, we will cancel the meeting for lack of a quorum. Please make your way down immediately. Our apologies again as we wait for Councilmembers Alarcon, Gruel, Weezer, and Weiss. We've made a last quorum call for those council members. Mr. Weiss, if you'll make your way down, so we do not fail to constitute a quorum. Mr. Weezer, if you'll make your way down for the same reason. Ms. Gruel is running late, but is pulling into the garage, rumor has it, and Councilmember Alarcon, please make your way down immediately before we cancel the meeting for lack of a quorum.
I request read adjourned.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can you just give me advice? What rule is it that says council members need to be here in their seats at 10:00 a.m.?
It's among the council rules, I do know that.
Let's see.
From the first ten.
Just before we start, colleagues, if you don't mind me rereading Rule Number 18. Regular meetings of the council shall be held in City Hall on Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday of each week at the hour of 10:00 a.m. It says in Rule 19, all members shall be in their respective seats at said hour of each regular council meeting, and at the time set for the session of any adjourned or special meeting, so please, let's try to abide by that rule. First order of business, please.
Approval to minutes.
All right, Ms. Perry happily moves that, Mr. Zine seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And Ms. Han moves, Mr. Rosendall seconds, without objection, those will be approved. We can run through the agenda, please.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Oh, yes. First, I have a salute to the flag. If I can ask Mr. Zine to please lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and if I can ask everybody to rise in council chambers for our salute to the flag.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If we can run through the items on the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 7 are building and safety liens, notice for public hearing, and the department reports that Items 2 and 5 may be received and filed in as much as they have been paid.
Okay, any objection to receiving and filing 2 and 5? Seeing none, we'll put that on...
And, Mr. President, there is a card on Item 1.
Okay, let's call one special for a card from the public. Other special items, colleagues? Items 1 through, are we 1 through 18 right now? 1 through 7. Okay? Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and take, we'll open and close the public hearings. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 8 through 12 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on May 20th.
Okay, is there any objection to that? If not, we will go ahead and continue those till the 20th of May. Next items, please.
Items 13 through 18 are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing. Council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, we'll hold those on the desk. We still are waiting Councilmember Alarcon and Councilmember Weezer. We have, so we have 12 members, let's go ahead then, and now that we have 12 members, please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. The next item, please.
Item 19 is a special presentation. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk. Next items?
Items 20 through 34 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, colleagues, this is Items 20 through 34. Anybody wishing to call any of those special, 20 through 34? Ms. Gruel? 20 for Mr. Weezer. Any other specials? If we can take up the balance, then, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 35 through 48 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on a few of those items.
Okay. Ms. Han, Item Number 35? Okay? 42 for Mr. Rosendall, my pleasure. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and...
Mr. President, there are cards on 45 and 46.
45, 46, we'll call special for cards on the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings, and if we can take up the balance, please prepare the roll. At your convenience, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
I know we're moving quick, thank you, colleagues. Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, Items 49 and 50 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue Item 50 to May 2nd.
Okay, is there any objection to that, colleagues? If not, I have a note to continue 49 till June 11th, is that correct? We'll take that up right after, okay. No objection, we'll continue 50 till the 2nd of May, and Item 49, if there's no objection, we'll continue that till June 11th. Okay? Next items?
Items 51 through 55 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a substitute motion on 53L, and there are cards on two of those items.
Which, which items?
53 and 54.
Okay, we'll call those special from cards on the public. Without objection, we'll substitute 53L.
And, Mr. President, there is also a card on 51.
Okay, we'll call 51 special as well. Anybody wishing to call 52 or 55 special? We'll open and close those public hearings, and seeing no objection to consideration of this batch of items, if we can open the roll on 52 and 55, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. And return us to public comment? Okay, now we'll take general public comment, which is for items that are under the jurisdiction of the city council but are not specifically on the agenda. We have quite a few cards today, and we have two minutes per speaker. We have a clock to help people guide their comments right at the podium there. We welcome your comments, and we'll start first with Zuma Dogg. After that, we'll hear from Noe Orgas. Mr. Dogg? You're first up. Good morning.
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to remind everybody, coverage of the city council meetings, you can go to zoomatimes.com. Over the past week, I've got video of Arnold Schwarzenegger, Mayor Antonio, Councilmember Weiss, and others, and you can watch the playback, zoomatimes.com. And, let's see, I'd like to remind and go on the record that the mayoral takeover of his LAUSD school cluster is illegal, like many things he tries to get away with, in violation of city charter and state law that prohibits the mayor from running school clusters. We lost a quorum on Friday. I know probably many of you don't know this because you weren't here, but on Friday, the city council lost a quorum, meaning that there were agenda items, city business, left on the table, and if you realize the fact that they have two to three hours of dog and pony shows, paid presentations that they put before city business, well, I think there should be some outrage that money was lost not finishing city business, and people came down to City Hall to speak on public comment for some of these items. Some, the people were here for a third time, and then they lost public comment, lost the quorum, and their public comments didn't count, so that's outrageous. On behalf of the people, I'd like a symbolic resolution to put the city business first, paid dog and pony shows later, and I wish I didn't have to spend this much time on it. I'd like to thank Sacred Heart Parish in Las, over the Las Vegas Project for inviting me over, and they're very happy with the fact that they pulled the plug on Las Vegas. You've been hearing Michael Coriol for months and months complain about it, so activism does work. Into Sunland Tahunga, Home Depot, I was at the Home Depot City Attorney mediation, it was, talked about dog and pony shows, what a joke, what a crock. Let me just say, I've never seen more outrage. Why would Home Depot even want to build in Sunland Tahunga when you have 300 people show up on a Saturday to say, "Please, don't do this." It's crazy, and it's because of money, that's why. Latham and Watkins, shame on you for violating the laws that you wrote, and you will not be in there, and if you do, it's going to be hell to pay. Zoomatimes.com, no on Home Depot, you idiots.
Mr. Dogg, on that last comment, I would please ask you to please refrain from profane comments as we have there. We try to be respectful of you, and please try to be respectful back, thank you. Noe Orgas will be our next speaker, after that is Jose Palacios. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Noe Orgas with the Youth Justice Coalition, and we're here today to talk about the past killings that have been going on in Los Angeles since January. Over 136 youth have died within these killings, and we, we feel that we need to do something about it. Young people throughout LA really deserve a bright future that Los Angeles has really neglected to give to them. How are we going to go about this problem? Because we feel that the police are not going to solve the issue. We need 500 more gang intervention workers to be throughout LA County and Los Angeles City to prevent these gang violence from happening. A lot of, a lot of people are dying, not only due to gang violence, but to, to the lack of resources that we choose to give to our kids. Youth centers, youth centers need to be open up, up late, 11:00 p.m. is what we're asking. The reason why is that is because young people don't have anything to do after school, places for them to go to, to do their homework, to do extracurricular activities is what is Jobs, jobs is something that, in the summer, is really needed for young people, but we also need jobs throughout the year for everybody who's on the gang database and the gang injunction areas. So, with that, I also want to, want to extend a handout to all the immigrants. We are, now, the police is taking on a big responsibility that they shouldn't, and, and they're asking undocumented citizens, what is their legal status? And we need to start protecting Special Order 40, and enforcing that Special Order 40 protects undocumented people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your testimony, appreciate it. If there's anything, one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'll take that, and we'll make sure that gets distributed, we appreciate that very much. Jose Palacios is our next speaker, after that is Daniele Arqueta. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jose with the Youth Justice Coalition.
Can we get a little bit closer to the microphone, just so we can hear you a little better? Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, like Noe was saying earlier, you know, our, the streets where we come from, you know, we, we seen a lot of killings, and we tired of it, you know, and we believe that cops ain't the answer, you know? We, we do need to get our, like, our neighborhoods, we need to get our neighborhoods flooded with jobs, and our places that we could go for, we could get job training and job placement as well. You know, we don't need no other cops, like, you know, like, telling us, like, we're gang members because we look a certain way, you know? Like, where we come from is differently, you know? I don't wear a suit like you guys do, you know? I don't wake up in a million-dollar mansion, you know? I don't, I come from the neighborhood, you know? So, we are different, and you need to understand that, instead of, like, you guys just putting more cops out there to harass us, you need to start putting more jobs in our neighborhoods. That's what I need to say.
Thank you very much, Jose. Daniele Arqueta is our next speaker, after that is Rodrigo Vasquez. Is, Daniele? Daniel? Nope, okay, is Rodrigo Vasquez here? After that is Maritza Galvez. Good morning.
How you guys doing? I hope you guys could wake up. I'm here supporting the YJC, part of YJC, supporting the community, supporting the youth, part of the struggle. We're basically asking for the obvious, what we've been asking for. We don't need more cops arresting the people. When they get out, they're going to come back to the same community unless somebody, unless their family happens to win the lottery and move out, which that isn't going to happen. So, basically, we want youth centers ran and operated by the community. We don't need LAPD or any politician coming in our communities and building something. We want to give power to the community, we want jobs that empowers the youth, empowers leadership within the community. So, everything based on strengthening our voice, strengthening the youth. We feel like a lot of times, even these hearings are being done, should be done somewhere else, should be done in community forums, should be hosted by the youth, should be taken out of City Hall, out of downtown, and within the communities that we are talking about. And a lot of times, even these hearings are done in the morning, where a lot of youth in school, a lot of parents at work, what about, you know, having these times where the parents could come, where the students could come in and have a voice? Because I'm pretty sure, you know, you need, you guys want their voice to be heard as well as ours. So, basically, we want more intervention workers, more prevention workers, more people that work in a grassroots level, that work directly with the families that are being targeted. We are the people that are being killed, our neighbors, our families. This has been happening since the day we were born, even before that, so we're here with our solution. Here is now, here is later, our solution is going to be the same now. Hopefully, things won't get worse, and you guys will start listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Maritza Galvez is our next speaker, after that will be Austin Delgado. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Maritza, I'm with the Youth Justice Coalition at Frey LA High School, and I'm here to ask all the City Hall, City, all of you guys to pay attention to the young people for once. I'm 16 years old, I live in the community, I live in Watts, I've lived all my life in South Central. It's time for you guys to step up. We have young people dying every day in our community, and nobody is doing nothing about it but us. Nobody cares because it's not their family, it's not their friends. Nobody cares because it's not their family that is being put into gangs. And you know what? You guys all talk about suppression, suppression this, suppression that, and that's not the answer. We need gang intervention workers. We need 500 gang intervention workers by June. We need people doing, coming out into our community and having these meetings, like Mr. Rodrigo just said. You know what? You guys represent us, but you guys are sitting in a fancy-ass hall right here, just talking about issues and not doing nothing. Start being held accountable for what happens in our communities. We, the young people who are 16 years old, 15, 17, know the answers, and you guys don't? You guys have been in office for so many years, and youngsters like us can tell you what we need, but you guys rather see law enforcement this, law enforcement that, and don't realize that the ones that are being affected is us, the ones that the blood is on the ground is ours, these are our family members. We want, we want young peo, we want education, we want youth centers open, seven days a week, 24/7. It's time. You guys talk about young people being this and that, and this and that, and you guys don't offer us opportunities. Come on, realize that LA's problem is not gangs, LA's problem is that we don't offer opportunities to no one, and we don't open doors, we just close them. I'm standing here as a part of this community, as a part of LA. It's time to open your ears and listen to us, because you know what? We're fed up, we're tired. It's time for you guys to be held accountable to us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Austin Delgado. After Austin will be Jerry Silva.
Hi, my name's Austin Delgado, and I work with an organization called Critical Resistance. And I'm here to support the Youth Justice Coalition and the bans, the demands for 500 gang intervention workers, for more youth centers to stay open. I think California, I think the United States is addicted to imprisoning oppressed people. This, this, like, more police, more punishment, more surveillance is not the answer, that's not what's making us feel safe. I think a lot of times when people, when we're hurting each other, when there's violence in our communities, that's a result of oppression, that's a result of poverty, of racism, of a country that was founded on white supremacy and slavery and genocide. And those conditions haven't gone away, the face just changes. Police are occupiers in neighborhoods, it's like neo-colonialism. Police are occupiers in neighborhoods of color, they're, whether they're black, brown, white, it doesn't matter, they all have the same racist classes, sexist conditioning that the LAPD, that this country supports. And so, everybody that's here today are targeted and criminalized on the daily in the media, and it's so easy just to keep locking people up and throwing people away and looking at us like we're garbage. And I don't have faith that y'all are going to be... And I don't have faith that y'all are gonna be the ones that are gonna change, change conditions. It's gonna have to come ultimately from oppressed communities themselves and we need a radical and a revolutionary movement. And what y'all are doing, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's working. I think schools that are underfunded, they're not broken, they're working perfectly well to maintain a permanent class of low-wage workers, of prisoners, of people that they could come in and say, look, all these conditions, you know, join the military, you don't have any other choices. And you know what? Like there's a, there's a real reason it's white supremacy when schools in Beverly Hills have everything they need and all those kids, higher education, it's like over 70% people white that are in that. And in prisons, we disproportionately fill them up, over 70% of people of color. That's not a coincidence.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry Silva. After Jerry Silva will be Georgie Lopez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You've seen me here before because I represent families to amend California's three strikes. And this council did a very brave thing and unanimously supported our efforts to amend the three-strikes law. Well, I'm here about another issue with YJC because I have a child. And because when my child turned 18, I was pushing her to get a job. And pushing and pushing and pushing and no matter how hard she tried, she couldn't find one. But then she found somebody that came up with an easy way for her to get a little bit of money. She was tired of me pushing her, she was tired of being rejected, she took the easy way. And when she took the easy way, she was popped immediately, 20 police surrounded her. Fortunately, she was put on probation for three years. During those three years, she couldn't get a job because she was on probation. She still can't get a job. You can't tell me, you can't tell me that police are gonna help her get a job. You can't tell me that. Or any of these kids. The police don't help you get an education or a job, they don't help with community centers. These demands are righteous demands, the mayor's ideas are futile, and I don't know who he's representing when he asks for more police. But anyone here with a backbone won't back that. Thank you.
Georgie Lopez is our next speaker. After Georgie Lopez will be Jenny Thompson, or Jimmy Thompson, excuse me.
Okay. My name is Georgie Lopez. I'm here with the YJC. I'm also representing the October 22 Coalition to Stop Police Brutality. First of all, I wanna say that I was really disturbed to see that we had to wait for you guys to get here on time. And then I see my own, people from my own community, the Latino council members over there in the corner talking with their backs to us when we're the ones in your constituency. I mean, I could talk about all of you guys. Parks, he knows, he's summarily intimate with what goes on with the police brutality. He's not here either. That's pretty interesting also. What I'm trying to say is that we have demands, over 136 young people have been killed in the street. That's not including deaths at the hands of the LAPD. They're killing a person a week. Basically, we don't want an expansion. If you just cut 10, or less than 10% what the mayor's trying to expand LAPD, you could get these gang intervention workers. People that die, it's on you guys because you are not doing anything. These are your children, your city, and all of you that are putting your heads down, this is on your hands. If you don't do anything to contradict what the mayor's trying to do, it's all on your hands because you are gonna be silently complicit in this. I'm really disturbed to see council members from my own community showing up late and not even having the decency to turn around and look at us. The other thing I'm trying to say is that we have demands. We want, we don't want the LAPD expansion because it's the most manned it's ever been, the ranks are the most swollen they've ever been, but yet they're killing more people and the gang problem has not been assuaged. It's still here, it's even worse. Whose fault is that? It's not our fault. We're here to demand that you pay attention to our demands. Look at us when we're up here speaking to you. And it is difficult to mobilize this many people to come here. This is a problem. Since the time we posted this flyer, seven more people have been killed. That was overnight. We're here to demand that you do something and we're gonna be here and we're gonna keep coming back. And if it makes you uncomfortable, then that means we're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Jimmy Thompson is our next speaker. After Jimmy will be Michael, I think it's Hubman? Excuse me if I got that wrong. I think it's Hubman or Huffman. Jimmy Thompson?
Michael Hubman?
First Jimmy Thompson and then you're on deck. Sorry. I just, I always give two names to let folks know a little bit of time so they can make their way up.
My name's Jimmy Thompson. I'm here representing facts, families, amend the three-strike laws. I've spent 22 years in prison. So now you're getting it from the horse's mouth. And the story is the same in prison as it is out here. I've seen young men and women that want education. If you would ask me what would have prevented me from going to prison for 22 years, I would say education. We need gang prevention, we need leadership. I've seen many things inside those prison walls. I've been in a cell 120 degrees. You know, by law, a dog left in the car over 90 degrees is against the law. Prison earns $40,000 a year to house inmates. You can send a man to Harvard and Yale for $40,000 a year. We need gang intervention, we need education, we need leadership in the communities. It's many men and women in prison today that should be on the street that has done the time. I went in, I got an AA degree, I got a BA degree. Most of the youngsters call me the OG inside prison. And the number one thing they crave for is education. I became a literacy tutor and many grown men cried on my shoulders because they said that they couldn't get that education within the community. And I just wanna let you know that more police officers is just like putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm. We need community to strive together. You've heard these young kids talk, so you know what they need. It's on your shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate your testimony. It's Hubman?
Good morning. Michael Hubman, human rights and homeless rights activist. And this morning, I'd like you to ask you to imagine, imagine having nothing and having no place to go. Imagine being hungry and thirsty and dependent on charity to stave off starvation and dehydration. Imagine all of your possessions in a shopping cart or a trash bin in a warehouse. Imagine living in fear of arrest for occupying a small piece of a sidewalk. Imagine on top of all that, you being old and firm and frail. Imagine your life expectancy being 10 years less than those around you. Imagine that your poverty and homelessness are the cause of the criminal justice system causing you to be a third-class citizen. Imagine, and being banished from the only community that you know. The homeless people of Los Angeles, Skid Row and beyond are our neighbors and our fellow citizens and they deserve to be treated with respect, dignity and compassion. Imagine having nothing and no place to go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubman. Johnny Perez is our next speaker. Johnny Perez? Is Johnny Perez here? Come on forward. After that will be our friend and former colleague Jackie Goldberg.
How we doing?
Good, how you doing?
All right. John Perez with Youth Justice Coalition. Basically, the reason that I came here today is to support the organizations and everybody that stands behind us as well. Basically, you know, we came here time and time again to, you know, push for gang intervention workers and jobs and, you know, end three strikes and life without parole for juveniles and stuff like that. But my main focus today is to support gang intervention workers. Obviously, you know, you guys try many tactics when it comes to putting more law enforcement. You can't like pretty much, you know, there's been like over 140 killings, you know, this year so far. And you can't really, you can't take care of a gang issue when you put a bigger gang out here, you know what I'm saying? So pretty much it's like, what we need is like, we need more workers, you know, that grew up in the neighborhoods, you know what I'm saying? People that, you know, they understand the culture that's out here. We don't need nobody from no other counties and people that have no idea how the street politics are. We don't, you know, we don't need no harassment and stuff like that. We don't need people to, we don't want our community to be set up, you know, for failure and stuff like that. Pretty much that's what's been going on. You wanna lock people up, they come out, you know, they try to get a job, they can't get a job because, you know, unfortunately, they're ex-felons or, you know, they're ex- convicts or whatever and, you know, like you give them no option but to go out there and, you know, they gotta eat too, you know? So, I mean, whatever it takes for them to come up, they're gonna do it, you know what I'm saying? And pretty much you're just watching this go down and, you know what? Eventually, you know, what goes around comes around and might affect you personally, you know? It's 140 people, you know, youths and stuff like that being killed, you know? Just imagine if it was one of your childrens and stuff like that, you know? So you gotta keep this in consideration because, you know, you guys are the ones with the fundings, you know, you guys have the control for the fundings and you gotta invest it into, you know, better purposes rather than just law enforcement. That doesn't work, man. That's garbage.
Thank you very much. Jackie Goldberg, we welcome back to our chambers, former Assemblywoman, former council member. Always great to have you here.
Former, 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 Mr. President.
And a current activist.
And members of the City Council. Some people have asked me what I'm doing these days. I'm back in Compton. I'm working with UCLA and the middle schools. We're trying to make a change there. But I wanna tell you that whether it's Compton, South Los Angeles, the North and East Valley, whether it's Central LA or Echo Park, whether it's East LA, the news is not good. And the news is not good. And the news is not good. The rents have gone sky-high, rent control is under assault on the ballot, there are no jobs, the kids are having a hard time figuring out what to do. And so I've come across this group that I am now pledged to work with because these young people are on the mean streets every day. And they are mean streets. I've been doing this stuff for about 40 years now, most of you know that. I've never seen it like this. I've never seen it like this. And these kids are coming here and they're saying to you, if your answer is more police, it's the wrong answer. That's what they're saying to you. They're not saying we don't need police, they're not saying there isn't crime. They're saying though, if you really think you're gonna make a difference, take that list of so-called gang members, and I happen to know many in my neighborhood who are not in gangs who are on the list. Because if you go to school at Belmont High School, you're associating with known gang members by going to school, you get your photograph taken and a couple of other things and now you're on that list for life. Take that list and get every one of those young people a job. Take that list and get every one of those young people a job. Take them as interns in your offices, put them in DWP, put them everywhere. DWP's 3,000 jobs short. Put them in DWP and apprentice them. Take everyone on that list of gang members, every single one of them. And what you're gonna find is you're gonna change this city overnight by that one action. Finally, I just wanna say if you don't think you're gonna change anything about gang out there with police, because police are not gang workers, it's not their job. We got about 60 maybe, according to, my count's less than that, but I'll take the president's count, we got maybe 60 gang workers in a city of three, what are we, three and a half million now? Okay? Well, you know, like my mother used to say, spitting in the ocean raises the volume but nobody notices. Okay? So it doesn't make any difference. If we don't ratchet up the number of gang workers to something like 500, this is a hot spell, here we are in April, wait until it's that long hot summer with no jobs, with nothing to do. We need to have people on the street, well-trained, committed people who know how to intervene with these gangs. Young people are not violent automatically, they are not in gangs automatically. It takes work to force them into that. And we've been working too hard and pushing them into that direction. We now need to work equally hard in keeping them safe and out of that direction. I thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goldberg. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. Oscar Johnson, I'd like to come forward. After that, that will be Jose Carmona.
Good morning. Good morning, City Councilman. My name is Oscar Johnson and I'm speaking about our condition in Los Angeles as our streets need to be repaired, our sidewalks need to be repaired, and that many buses on MTA is in fracture, they illegal, they don't have any shocks to serve. You can have an accident just riding MTA buses. And there are a lot of MTA buses are being used for their own purpose of use. They be following many intersection. And there are school buses as used for their own personal gain. But, and I would think about, we can end corruption in government, we can end a lot of oppression that's going on in this country. If we can end corruption in government, we can stop illegal agents. If we end corruption in government, we can stop drugs in our street. If we can end corruption in government, we can clean up homes on Skid Row. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Carmona is our next speaker. Jose Carmona? After that will be Esperanza Martinez.
Hi, my name is Joe Carmona and I've been a school teacher for 35 years. And I'm here to wholeheartedly support the Youth Justice Coalition. And it amazes me when I they come up here, the real people that come up here and talk to you and so many of you do not pay attention. Here they are dying, here they are falling out there, and they're tugging at your shirts telling you, this is what's happening to us, listen to us. And all you're doing is looking over their heads and thinking maybe some great savior's gonna come and help you. That's not gonna happen. Listen to these people. I'm not gonna repeat what they said because I can't, I'm not that good to do that. But I know that you're really at this point not paying attention. When will somebody in here stand up and take them under their wing and say, you know, this is the one, I'm gonna back you up and no one's gonna stop you, I'll open the doors for you? But I don't see that yet. When that happens, maybe we can start going because we know we can solve the problem. These kids, I've been to their meetings, there are many more than that that you see here, believe me. And that's day's gonna come when they're gonna flood you, all right? So the other thing I wanna say is this, Mr. Huizar, where are you? Mr. Huizar, I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you, Mr. Huizar, because you were the person who put this program that I was in, Youth League program, in the schools. And for the first time, we're actually fighting against gang violence in the schools. And now, let me just tell you that I am going to retire. I'm getting out because the program that you and I work for is no longer there and I can do better now, working in the community to work against gang violence. And again, I'm glad to be associated with you who had so much courage to stand up at the Board of Education and I'm glad to be called your friend. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carmona. Esperanza Martinez is our next speaker. After that is Miguel Santos. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Esperanza Martinez and I'm an organizer with the Bus Riders Union. But I'm also a resident of Los Angeles. I was born and raised and currently reside in Cypress Park. Two years ago, the Bus Riders Union launched our 1,000 More Buses, 1,000 Less Police campaign. And this was back then posing a respectful challenge to the mayor's plan to hire 1,000 more cops. Yesterday, I sat in this council chamber for eight and a half hours as we heard the budget hearings. And I was extremely, I'm extremely concerned with the mayor's plan to hire 1,000 more cops, police at any cost. But I was also very disappointed to see that this, that this plan went uncontested except by a few folks in the audience. So as the council prepares to engage the mayor's proposed budget, I want you to think about what folks have said here today. I would like you to reconsider spending $2 billion on suppression and really think about what it looks like to have real community, gang intervention and prevention. So today, I ask for 1,000 more youth centers, 1,000 more gang intervention workers, 1,000 more unionized jobs. But I also recognize that the only way that this is gonna be possible is if we have 1,000 less police. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miguel Santos. Miguel Santos? Is Miguel Santos here? Come on down. And next after that will be Olga Hall. Good morning, Mr. Santos.
Yeah, well, I'm a student at the Youth Justice Coalition. I come here to represent all the youngsters that are dying out in the streets. I would like to get everybody's attention, everybody's eyesight on me, you know?
We also have, just so you know, sometimes people are down on their screen because they have you live on TV right on their screen.
All right, all right. Cool. Well, I would like to say that we need gang intervention on programs, youth centers. Because all we're used to is liquor stores, you know, the homies hanging out in the street and these schools that are being affected. And that's, schools are becoming a ground of recruitment for gangs. And there, you know, you go to school, you don't, you don't have another type of mentality and shit. You get used to the things that are all around you. And sometimes you have to blend in with your environment in order to survive. And while you see me right here, I could be out in the streets causing mayhem, you know? But I'm right here trying to help the community. And I had a lot of people that have passed away, a lot of people that have problems. And then you also have like the racial tension. And that's going on because more people are being sent into juvenile facilities and all that, which, and when they go in there, they have that social, like, that social problem in there. And then when they come out to the community, they come, they come out with the same mentality and shit. So what you expect when you're setting up, you know, just the road to becoming that, you know? And you have the money to change, and, and, you know, all they need is a little bit, you know? Why can't we say, why can't we go out in the street and say, "Oh, there goes, there's a liquor store, there's the homies," but there's that youth center which gets involved with the community, you know? So, you know, you have the money, you have the power, and hopefully, you know, I didn't waste my couple minutes right here. Three, two, one, I'm out.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Olga Hall. Olga Hall? After Ms. Hall will be Arnold Sacks.
Okay. Good morning, members of the council. For the past few weeks, I have been talking to you about how the Autry does business. Today, I would like to ask you, what do you think Kevin Costner, Kirk Douglas, Willie Nelson, and many others that have been supporting the Autry National Center would do if they knew about all the lies the Autry has been spreading to their members and the public? Autry's numerous lies to their supporters need to be public. Their supporters need to know the truth, who Autry really is, and what their true intentions are. They need to know how Autry manipulates the political system to gain their support. They need to know Autry has come to our neighbor community under the guise of a helping hand. But the reality is quite different. Autry's plan, from the very beginning, was to take all the artifacts that belong to the Southwest Museum and take them to their museum in Griffith Park. Why would Autry show a misleading balance sheet? Why did Autry omit the truth? Autry could not help the Southwest Museum because Autry did not have the cash. The $98 million Autry show in their balance sheet was misleading. It's only a promissory note receivable upon Mrs. Jackie Autry's death. The fact Autry has no money to make the repairs it promised in the virtue. Does Kevin Costner, Kirk Douglas, Willie Nelson, and all the other supporters know that by supporting the Autry, they are part of the Autry's web of lies? Do they know they will be part of the demise of the first museum in Los Angeles, the Southwest Museum? If you accept those lies, you too will be part of that deception. You too will be an accomplice in the demise of the first museum of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
The Southwest Museum.
Appreciate your comments today. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Michael Carrion. And then we'll go to Van Nuys, following Mr. Carrion for Ms. Brewer. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I just, I'm really shocked at today's headlines from the Daily Breeze in the South Bay. "Unions Vow to Fight L.A. Budget Layoffs." Last week, there was all this love in the council chambers from the unions. Today, they're fighting. You had your opportunity. You had them right here in the palm of your hands. You could've said, "We know you're gonna back us when we have to cut these contracts. You know you're gonna back us." And you let it go, and now the relationship is over. That's terrible. The budget so far, the budget projected savings, what's the total you could come up with? And the fees that the mayor's proposing, does that affect the city workers, or do they get that, I said, write-off for the cost of living increase? You reopening contracts? Why not reopening the subsidies that have been given out to the contractors who are building Grand Avenue, who are building the, doing the construction around Staples Centers? There's a lot of money that's going out to billionaires that should be going into the public's pocket, that the public needs. Why not look to reopen those also? Don't just leave it at the contracts because then you're just kidding yourselves. And finally, last week, there was an item on your agenda regarding the Sunshine Canyon landfill. And I've spoken about landfills here with the county's math, where they believe that six times 12 is 66. You're in, you wanna, you wanna join up with the county to run that operation. You're aiding and abetting in the loss of funding that would be collected on 6,600 tons of trash. And on one hand, the mayor is talking about a budget deficit. And on the other hand, you're gonna climb into bed, Mr. Mayor, you need to watch who you're sleeping with, with the county on the Sunshine Canyon landfill and the fiasco they're running there. Thank you for your time and your answers.
Our next speaker is Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I'd like to thank all the youth that came out. I've been voicing that opinion for many years here. But if they want to know why they're not gonna get any gang intervention, people, it's because you gotta go to the mayor. The mayor doesn't pay attention to nobody. Okay, the mayor's too busy chasing around Hillary Clinton. He should be here, doing his job. He sounds like Monica Clinton. Just like Monica Lewinsky followed around President Clinton, the mayor's out there following Senator Clinton. He should be here doing his job. He spends more time out of town than he does here, listening to the youth and the people of the city that he's here to, here to support. I'm sick and tired of this mayor. He talks a lot. We never had a problem this large in this city until he started giving everybody all these tax breaks. We don't have any money in the system because everybody's getting tax breaks. Look at the new police department. How much did that go over budget? Millions? 100 million? You could've paid for those 10,000 cops with that money. But you can't now because you're giving it to contractors. The same contractors who give him tens of thousands of dollars to put into the schools. If that's not a payoff, what is? People, open your eyes. If you kids want to make a difference, call your councilmen. People don't pay attention to you because you can't vote. You're not 18. Until you can vote with these people in this horseshoe, pay attention to you. Register to vote if you haven't. If you have friends and family who are not registered to vote, get them to vote. And get them to vote for somebody who's listening to your problems. That is the only way that they're gonna listen to you in this horseshoe, is by registered voters, not by people who have a problem. So register.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. We'll go out to Van Nuys. Our next speaker is Sharon Brewer. After that will be Miriam Fogler. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Morning. Sharon Brewer, public comment. City council's special event fee waivers amounts continue to climb despite city leaders asking public to pay higher fees to help balance the budget. Total July 1, 2007 to April 23, 2008, $4,134,370 plus. You've had 1,032 total motions, 801 with amounts, 203 reimbursed, 28 no amounts. Daily News article, April 29, front page, "Budget Committee Questions: Mayor's Plan to Balance City Coffers." For the first time, city will fully fund Los Angeles Police Department's overtime demand of 1.6 million hours, or $102 million. That's $15.8 million more than last year. We have learned that more police does not necessarily reduce overtime, but in some cases increases overtime as arrests increase and the need for that officer to process arrests, says deputy mayor. Bratton defended the LAPD's budget boost. 1.6 million hours divided by 24 hours in a day equals 66,666 days of overtime. Please show me all documentation showing all LAPD overtime hours for last year. How many overtime hours are from special events where fee waivers have been waived by city council? How many LAPD officers will be involved in the May Day March on Thursday or LA Fiesta Broadway this past Sunday? Again, city council, fee waivers, July 1, 2007 to April 23, 2008, $4,134,370 plus. City council, please tell me where I can find out the true cost for each special event fee waiver given by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler. After Ms. Fogler is Donna Perman.
Oh, it was you. You called first.
Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. She said it all, Sharon Brewer. She really knows her stuff. And I'm trying to get more people like Jerry down here. I'm gonna introduce him here at the podium. And I'm just really sick and tired of it, that people don't come down here and fill these chairs up. If all these chairs were all filled and downtown and people out the doors, we would have something done about the people around the horse. They would start to, ooh, they start to get real scared. They start to react, you know, because they know, we're afraid now the public is gonna rise up. We better do something right for a change. If the public remains apathetic and quiet and complicit, incompetent, they're not gonna get things done in this city, just what's happening in Sherman Way and Owens Mouth and Canoga Park. It's a tragedy to see this kind of thing going on, you know? You can't get things done because the people are not involved in their government enough. Secondly, the city workers are being duped by the unions themselves. And I call them on the bullhorn every week, Arnold, every single week, telling them they need to get on the ball and get off the CRA. So don't think that they don't deserve their cost of living. They sure do. My husband saved the city from costly water violations in the Santa Monica Bay. So don't tell me he doesn't deserve his colosseals. And plenty of good workers out there. I read the paper alive, and there's a lot of people in the city that are really, behind the scenes, are really doing the job. So don't think they don't deserve it, and they need to get the unions on the right track. And you're right about that. So the point is, we need to be at them and tell them that they need to take a pay cut. The city council, $125,000 a year, and no raises this July. And the mayor, and you people talking about increasing police, overtime, we need more police, not overtime. It costs more to pay somebody overtime than hiring another police officer to serve our streets and replacing, you know, the people who are retiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Donna Perman is our next speaker. After that will be Jerry Isgrig.
Okay, this is Donna Perman for Van Nuys. I want to tell the city council members, one day you'll leave, whether it's after one term, two, or three terms. What do you want to be remembered for? I think you believe you're remembered for your green projects, your dedication to stopping plastic bags being used in huge artsy projects, events for kids, in your photo moments. But I feel you're remembered for Prop S, turning your back on city employees. You'll remember for huge pay raises. You're remembered for fee waivers totaling in the millions. Remembered for the trash tax allowing the DWP to put such a large increase all at once. Remembered for your half-formed ideas like bus-only lanes on Wilshire Boulevard and subway to the sea. Is it even feasible? Though you're remembered fondly by the CRA and huge developers, of course, city has to grow. Developers are your friends. City employees are remembered how you're talking about cutting back days, days off without pay, and renegotiating their, renegotiating their pay raise. Hard-fought pay raise, sorry. They deserve that raise. Even city employees not affected personally can't think well of you. Your legacy is fancy rich projects that benefit mostly the rich, with some going to the rest of us. Zuma Dogg says it's best when he tells you city council's running the city into the ground, and Miriam Fogler also for a warning about the CRA. I see the know-how, you don't. Thrift stores closing up, leaving their belongings behind. Boggs Big Boy closing down right after the CRA came in. A nice restaurant closing down near Valley Junior College after the Orange Line came in. Remembered, but will you be fondly? Don't worry, you will have company of former council members who also ruined the city before you, like John Perroll. Well, you can't defend himself, but believe me, he would just laugh at that. No harm done. You smile at yourself. Yes, you do some good projects. Personally, you're a nice man and woman, but the harm you do will be what you're remembered for. But you can change that image by helping the average voter. Better shape we're in, the better revenue we can give to you. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. I mean, sorry, excuse me, Ms. Perman. Jerry Isgrig is our next speaker.
Come on up. I want to introduce her to...
I'm sorry. Can we have Mr. Isgrig, please? Thank you.
My name is Jerry Isgrig, and I'd like to address two issues real quick, okay? For one, the Public Defender's Office has not, you know, given the homeless people or people with mental or physical disabilities proper treatment as far as, as far as legal counsel. They totally, they violated my First Amendment, my Fifth Amendment, my Eighth Amendment, and my Eleventh Amendment right. And I have proof of that in the court documents due to wrongful, wrongful representation. Because I suffer from bipolar disorder, and I've been living on the streets for over 10 years. I eat out of dumpsters. I push shopping carts. I'm a member of the, you know, I live homeless when I'm not, when I'm not in custody due to pushing a shopping cart. And the thing is, is you need to address the issue about, you know, the Public Defender's Office does not give you proper representation. And I will prove that. One of these days, I will bring the paperwork here and prove that in a forum with everyone here. And I will bring a camera crew over here too, myself. Because I know, but my issue is, I want to help the homeless people because I've lived on the streets for over 10 years, 17 years total, okay? I've eaten, it's harmful for us to eat out of trash cans because the city doesn't want to help us get off the streets and get help, which is really sad. We can't even get food from churches nowadays because we're nobodies. We're homeless, bums, worthless. And I'm not a worthless human being. I'm in the Mary Lynn Foundation in Los Angeles, and the only way I got in there is because I had to be arrested and put in there because I can't get no aid from my council people. I need help. I want to be taken off the streets for good. I want a program for homeless people. I am a human being. I have rights, and I will observe them. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Isgrig. Ann Walnam is our next speaker. After that will be Diane Perez.
More than five years ago, I appeared before this body asking for your support of a resolution regarding Southwest Museum that was presented by Councilman Reyes and Councilman Pacheco. The resolution stated, "The Los Angeles City Council hereby supports the community's position that there be appropriate restoration and preservation of the buildings at the Southwest Museum, and that publicity, programming, and community outreach be supported to the fullest extent possible to attain optimum use of the museum at its present location." Although this resolution passed unanimously in 2003, it probably would not be unanimous in 2008, after five years of corporate bombardment by the Autry. But you need to know that the Friends of Southwest Museum Coalition, with 10,000 petition signatures and 80 supporting organizations, is not a trivial organization, nor is Northeast Los Angeles a trivial community. Furthermore, we reject, as inadequate, the community center two-room exhibit plan proposed by the Autry and the so-called Southwest Society with no guaranteed accountability. That was the end of my message. I want to say, I'm impressed by most of the testimony we've heard from young people and homeless this morning. Southwest Museum is not a life-threatening issue, but it is an issue of an icon in the community that's an inspiration to the community, that's a center for the community, that has inspired many young people to take scientific and academic careers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walnam. Diane Perez is our last speaker for general public comment. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Diane Perez, and I'm a parent of two children that are victims of incarceration in gangs. And my younger son, he's in Silmar Juvenile Hall right now. And he wrote a letter because he wanted everybody to hear what he has to say. My name is Johnny Lucero, and I take responsibility for my actions. I vow when I get out, I will help people to understand young kids' needs. Before I got in trouble, I had a dean at Mayfair High School, I'll leave his name out, tell me I didn't belong in his school because I was a Paramount kid. He took every chance he could to break me down and make me feel unworthy. I always felt in my heart he was wrong. But what I thought is that when I became a pro football player, which was my dream, I would laugh in his face. I'm a dark-skinned Hispanic that aged 14, was always hassled by the police. I always wondered why me. Now I look back and I see they won. They broke me down. Society and the world do not understand kids, especially in low-income areas. My mom worked two jobs and was never home. My older brother took care of me and my younger brothers. Now my brother and friend are facing 12 years or more. For myself, I don't know. I want everyone to know my mom did the best she could for us, but we had nowhere to go, nowhere to turn, when our family was suffering from a broken family and domestic violence. I think we need more positive role models, somewhere to go, intervention, someone to talk to, coaches, coaches to show us the way out of poverty. talk to, coaches, coaches to show us the way out of poverty. I remember my mom went to welfare food stamps and was denied. I remember hearing her cry in the room when she thought we were asleep. Why I tell you this is because I hear the same similar story from other kids locked up in here. For me, if I do receive four years, I'm going to be and do all I can to get an education, better myself, to show other kids at risk of jail or gangs that they can do better. But I need help. I need you people to understand we need support, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, interventions, family support, real counselors to help us. Please individualize the circumstances of enhancement laws. Our unjust for some cases. They need revision. Twelve years will not help my brother or friend. It will institutionalize them.
We try to keep it as even for all speakers, just to be as fair as possible. But if you'd like to give us the whole letter, we'd be able to circulate that and make sure everybody gets a copy.
Okay. Well, the last thing I need to say is, when I visited my son on Sunday, I asked him if he was going to be happy with serving a year and a half, and he told me, no, he didn't want to get out, that he wants to go to fire camp and do at least three years, because when he comes out, there's nowhere for him to go.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. We really appreciate your testimony today. And the state law doesn't allow us to respond too fully, but I want to thank everybody who made time to come here today. I know that there's a couple of things that we'll be voting on. Hold up. If I can ask, I'm responding to some of the things that you said, if you'd like to listen to them, but we will communicate that in another way. We can move on with item number thirty-five Ms. Hahn has asked for out of order. Thank you. Ms. Hahn, thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues to take item thirty-five out of order. I have a whole group who's come down from San Pedro to speak on this item. Colleagues, this is about a land use issue in San Pedro at Nineteenth and Walker, which was the site for over sixty years of a very small-town market called McCowen's Market. It was one of those neighborhood markets. Everybody sort of grew up going to this market. It was a piece of the fabric, really, of not only this neighborhood, but really all of San Pedro. It was purchased by a developer who seemed to lead the community to believe that he would continue the market, which, under that guise, was acceptable to the community. But we found out very quickly that this developer did not intend to continue this neighborhood market, but instead bulldozed it and proposed to build twenty-three condominiums at that site. The community was very loud and was very vocal and was very organized in their opposition to changing the quality of this neighborhood. So on January twenty-ninth of this year, I introduced a, I introduced a motion asking that a Q condition be placed on this property, which would virtually return it to an R1 status. Within five hundred feet of this location, it's all R1. So you can picture this as a residential neighborhood, which has no place for this kind of density in its area. I want you to know that on March eighteenth, Harbor Area Planning Commission took this issue up. Over two hundred people showed up at the Area Planning Commission, and every single one of them spoke in favor of this Q condition. In fact, I have received over one hundred seventy-five letters. I've received over a hundred emails and phone calls, and not one of them has been in support of this kind of density being put on this location, but instead have all supported the idea of returning it to an R1 zoning. The Harbor Area Commission voted unanimously four to one to uphold the Planning Department's recommendation that indeed we put this Q condition on this property. So that's what we're hearing today. The developer appealed that decision, and we, as the council, are hearing this today. I would urge you to support the Planning Department's recommendation, the Area Planning Commission's vote, and certainly the wishes and the will of the entire neighborhood and community surrounding this property. And now, if you would, I would like to hear the public comment that's here.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead, and we have a number card, so we'll go directly to those. My first speaker is retired Lieutenant Colonel Joe Mancuso. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. I'm retired infantry Lieutenant Colonel Joe Mancuso. I live at eleven-twenty-two West Twentieth Street in San Pedro, located within some five hundred meters of the former McCowen's Market, which is located or was located at nineteen-thirty-two Walker Avenue. I am presently employed by the City of Los Angeles in the capacity of automotive supervisor at the Piper Technical Center. As such, I am responsible for maintenance and operation of a fleet of some fifteen-hundred vehicles operated daily by yourselves, your staffs, other executive staffs, and other support personnel. And we're doing our darndest to save money for the city. I thought I'd throw that in. My purpose here today, however, is to urge this council to accept the recommendations resulting from the hard work and extraordinary effort expended by distinguished council member Janice Hahn, and I mean that very sincerely, folks, distinguished council member Janice Hahn, and the distinguished members of the Harbor Area Planning Commission, and the hard-working friends and neighbors of our San Pedro community. We respectfully request that our neighborhoods continue to be kept safe, secure, and protected from dangerous overcrowding, which would result from irresponsible overbuild, irresponsible overbuild, and that the imposition of the Q condition on a subject property be favorably considered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker.
Since you have other cards, let the community, that people showed up, let them do it, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Linda Marinovich is our next speaker. After that will be Mark Wells.
Hello. I'm Linda Marinovich. I also live in San Pedro in Janice Hahn's district. I want to encourage you to vote in favor of the Q condition, which will prevent overbuilding in this area. I also want to thank Wendy Gruehl for supporting our planning committee classes, and please keep our neighborhood low-density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Wells. After that is Doug Epperhart.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, thank you, Councilwoman Hahn, for all your effort and all your staff's effort. I don't live in San Pedro, never have, and I don't think I ever will. I live in Rancho Palos Verdes, just right next door. I also represent a group called Our Neighborhoods R1, and this is a group that was originally set up to fight the Ponte Vista weapon of mass development, and that's a term we're going to use a lot more in the future, unfortunately. We think this weapon of mass development, even though it may be small on most standards of, say, Las Lomas or Home Despot, still signals a dramatic change in the environment and the lifestyle of the residents in the Vista del Oro area. And you have a law on the books, you have a code on the books that's fairly unique to this city, that allows you to state, no, you can't build condominiums. You can build homes that are just like all the other homes. And on two of the six lots that Mr. Rosenthal owns, he is actually doing that, and he'll do one for another one. But we want the current lots that is owned, C-1-1XL, to have the Q placed in front of it so that only single-family residences of lots on lots of five thousand feet or better can be built and will continue the long and wonderful history of Vista del Oro. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Epperhart is our next speaker. After that is Barbara Dragich.
Doug Epperhart, Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. And just before I begin, let me point out that Linda Marinovich is the planning chairperson for the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. This is a small representative group of the hundred to hundred-and-fifty folks who showed up at our neighborhood council meeting when we discussed this issue. We voted, I believe unanimously, to support the Q condition. I think really this is an issue of neighborhood preservation. We need to think about not only what Los Angeles will be, but what Los Angeles has been and what Los Angeles is. And I think this is about preserving a neighborhood as it is, so that it provides not only opportunity for the folks who live there to continue to enjoy it as they have in some cases for decades, but also for the folks who are pursuing that dream to come and live in that neighborhood someday. We want it to be what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Barbara Dragich.
My name is Barbara Dragich, and I represent a large group of neighbors called Vista del Oro, Neighbors Against Condos. Our community and neighborhood suffered enough of a blow losing McCowen's Market. We do not want to lose the charm of our single-family neighborhood by having this developer build eighteen condos. We live in a quiet neighborhood of older, quaint homes and take great pride of ownership. We do not want our property values compromised by the greedy development of eighteen condos that don't conform with our neighborhood. Therefore, we urge this council to attach a Q condition on this property that will protect our property values, our neighborhood, and our community. And we want to thank Janice Hahn for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our last public speaker card. Ms. Hahn, would you like to say any additional words?
No, thank you. I think you've heard it. I really want to thank all of you for coming all the way down from San Pedro to City Hall. I know it's a long way down here. I really want to thank Barbara for organizing the community so quickly. You've never seen anything quite like this. They organized, they had signs on every house. They came and showed up at the appropriate hearings and neighborhood council meetings. They've come here today, and I really want to thank my staff, Gordon and Frank, for following this. This was a process that I've never done before, but I realize this is our right on the city council to introduce the idea of a Q condition on a piece of property. This makes sense for this neighborhood and this community, and I urge you to support it today with your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. I know Mr. Laban stepped out to speak to our public comment folks. That leaves us with eleven members, and this is an ordinance, so we're trying to get him back in here. We'll hold it on the desk just momentarily, but we will have twelve members. Just for the folks that are here, an ordinance passes if there are at least twelve members that vote yes unanimously on the first reading. Otherwise, it gets carried over one week. So we're going to try to get you a yes vote today if that's where things are headed. So just sit tight, and as soon as Mr. Laban is back, we will take that vote. If we can go to the other items that are called special, we'll hold that on desk number nineteen, please. Number one, sorry, we had before that.
Yeah, item one was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Number one, we have public comment cards. Timothy Quick, would you like to come forward on item number one?
Thank you. Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
I'm here representing Mr. Michael Maimon, who is an objector and part-owner of the property located at nine-thirty-three Southwest Morland. This matter has to do with the report and confirmation of a lien on the property for abatement. Mr. Maimon has received, has not received most of the notices on the property because he was out of the country, specifically from August six to August six oh six to August oh seven. He was in Israel and Canada, and he had some difficulty returning to the country. And based on that, this is his first opportunity for a hearing in this matter. As a side note, the property had a historical building on it that was demolished as part of the processes taking place. Mr. Maimon had an agreement with a partner who was to take care of matters related to the property, and needless to say, they didn't perform and proceed to do so. Mr. Maimon also had a lawyer who made contact with the building department for a two-week continuance based on her illness, and she was not permitted to the continuance, and therefore, she was not able to attend the last hearing in this matter. The property's had a confusing history related to the different cases and the action taken by the city on these different cases. An example is that for the dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, case number one-nine-four-oh-seven-four, simply referenced the rear single-family dwelling on the property for abatement as opposed to the front unit, which is a ten-unit building. This property is also in the Wilshire Koreatown redevelopment area, and the property will support up to thirty-two units. Mr. Maimon is interested in a low- and moderate-income housing project on the lot.
Thank you, sir.
We simply request that the city leave record title to the property as it is to assist Mr. Maimon in his efforts to proceed to redevelop it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Zuma Dogg on this item.
Councilmember Laban is back. Would you like to take that vote, since he's back? Would you like to wait?
No, Mr. Dogg, go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Laban's about to ruin the Mr. Vote. Okay, I'd like to just go on. This is for the record. It's not a sexy issue, but I'm seeing a lot of these now today on the agenda, eight of them. And what it says here, it's liens to cover the cost of barricading and fencing and demolitions and asbestos removals. And right here, this lien's for a hundred thousand dollars. We know the city's in a budget deficit, you know, facing, you know, seven-hundred-million-dollar budget deficit, job cuts, and all types of problems financially. So this is, consider yourself on notice. If you are a person that falls under these Building and Safety Department guidelines, make sure that you are compliant, because they will be coming after you every step of the way with these types of things. I say that this is going to be the new thing we'll be seeing here to try to generate revenue, throw down all these things that you have to comply with, and then if you don't, they'll put liens on you. That's how it works in L.A. City. They told me to look at Chinatown to find out how this movie, City Operates.
Our next speaker is Michael Maimon.
My name is Michael Maimon. I'm an Israeli citizen who invested, after retirement from the military and government in Israel, I came here and invested money in real estate, my savings from retirement. I'm the owner of the property in nine-thirty-three Southwest Morland that was demolished last September, October by the Building and Safety. After one year of hearings, a number of hearings that took place in L.A., but I was unable to attend them because another, one agency, one government agency demanded that I will be attending these hearings, and another government agency, the building, the border officers in the U.S.-Canada ports didn't allow me twice to enter the U.S. with a valid visa, business visa, even when I showed them the notices and the invitation for the hearings. This is my first opportunity to attend a hearing regarding my property demolition that was eventually demolished, and now I'm being asked to pay one hundred four thousand dollars as a lien that will be attached to my property. I heard, I didn't know the nature of this hearing. I thought it was going to be like court or something, but I see it's like Greek parliament, so you heard already some provocative things. I don't want to sound provocative, but I'm going to say something extreme. You are being required to approve, to confirm, a lien of one hundred four thousand dollars against my property, then I'll have to pay the cost of the demolition. And I come with an extreme request that I will be compensated for this demolishing and for the fact that U.S. government officers didn't allow me to come to the hearings, and the people in charge of the Building and Safety refused to give extension when my lawyer asked them to give, reschedule the hearing because of, she was sick in a hospital. And I think that I'm entitled for compensation, not for a lien attached to my property.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Laban?
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, could you address this gentleman's concern? Could you address his concerns? He says he is a property owner. He is not a resident of the United States. He tried to come into the country to respond to these matters, was not allowed to. This is the first time he's been at a public hearing. All that being said, you may still have to pay for everything, but I see the representative of Building and Safety right there. Mr. Lara, could you address this gentleman? Hold it on the desk so they can get some discussion.
We have consulted with Council District One where this item is, and they would like to move forward with this today, but if you'd like to get some information on the record--
They haven't talked to Mr. Lara.
I believe they've been in close contact, but--
Have you ever met Mr. Lara? You had discussions? David, to have a conversation, hold it on the desk, then we'll vote on it.
Okay. The Longoria, who refused to hear and to give--
Thank you, sir.
We're going to have you talk to the Building and Safety real quick, and then they can tell you. David--
But we've had, we'll have them talk, but the direction from the council district is, they've asked for a vote to proceed on this item now, so we'll make sure that they contact and talk to each other in the meantime, but we will take that vote.
I understand, only because the city attorney, the man, said he never-- I understand, only because the city attorney, the man, said he never was heard by anybody, whether that is the case. Just advise, if you hold on the desk and reconsider.
Department of Building and Safety would be the appropriate department to talk to the individual.
Great. And we'll make sure they connect, but let's prepare the roll on this item. And please tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. That is approved. If we can take item...
Just one question. Are we going to hold it on the table so at least they could talk to the Building and Safety?
We have very direct direction from Council District One, as it would be in your office. I can give you a little background on the case if you'd like, Mr. Laban, but we want to make sure that they connected with each other, but they wanted the vote.
I want to make sure the city attorney, that's all.
Yep. And the city attorney established it.
I'm on the council and the district, but I was just stating what the public comment was.
Thank you. I'll take up the next item, number 19, please. Oh, Mr. Laban is here, so we'll take the vote on item 35. If we can take that up without objection?
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, would you like to make some concluding remarks?
Are we hearing, are we voting on the appeal, or are we voting on the Planning Department's recommendation?
Okay. Mr. City Clerk?
Because I mean, obviously, we would deny the appeal, but we would...
This is the Harbor Area Planning Commission's recommendations and ordinance.
So you were asking for an I vote?
I'm asking for an I vote, colleagues.
Absolutely. Okay. Ms. Hahn is asking for an I vote to uphold the Area Planning Commission recommendations.
Okay.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved.
Wendy.
That's good. All right, if we can take up item 19, please.
And that is a special presentation, and there are cards on that item.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and hear the presentation first on item 19? We'd like to ask our guest to come forward on this item. Who are here, why don't you come to the table up here to present? Thank you for coming today. We've got Dr. Conway here to make a report, colleagues, on the USC, from the USC Lust Center, on the Casden Multifamily Market Report, on some of the economic conditions and circumstances right now. So with that, we turn it over to you to present to the council. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. And a lot has happened in a year since I last spoke to you in this council chambers. The economy has definitely softened. It has weakened. We are skating near a recession. I don't need to tell you that. I'm sure that you're all very familiar with that. So I'm going to just go through a few slides quickly to tell you what's going on with the apartment market. The biggest thing that we noticed last year is that there have been job losses in Southern California. Where they have occurred significantly is in Orange County, where there were actually no job gains last year. There were actually job losses to about 7,000 jobs that were lost. But in the other counties, in Los Angeles and also in Riverside, San Bernardino, we have seen that job growth has significantly slowed. And in L.A. County, the number of new jobs that were created last year was about 20,000. Primarily where the job growth has slowed is in the construction industry, and in those industries that are connected to real estate, financial services, which is partly for the reason for the Orange County job losses. Out of the Inland Empire, construction has slowed significantly. There have been job gains in other areas, and I should mention that, that professional business services is growing. And also, we're seeing increases in leisure and hospitality, and also in healthcare services. Most of the new jobs that have been created in the last five years have been in the healthcare services area. As a result, unemployment rates are rising. Unemployment rate in L.A. County went up a full percentage point last year. It went from 5.2% up to, I'm sorry, slightly less than 4.5% to 5.2%. This is in December. And it has actually, it's above the national average right now. But we do need a longer-term perspective on this, because the unemployment rates are approaching those that we had in the last recession, 2001, 2002 recession, but they aren't nearly as high as what we had in the 1990 recession. So the government, the Federal Reserve, has tried to cut interest rates. They've also, are introducing a great deal of stimulus to the economy, and the hope is that, that actually the economy will pick up in the second part of this year. But we do anticipate that growth will be a lot slower in this year and also in 2009. On the positive front, if we go to the next slide, exports are actually improving. We have seen years and years and years where we had very, very low levels of exports. They actually jumped up quite a bit last year, increasing by almost 15%. This is due to the dollar having declined in value. And we're also seeing that imports have actually leveled off. So we expect that exports will continue to improve. Multinational companies are doing well, and to help compensate for some of the construction industry and the housing downturn not doing so well. Now, going on to the housing downturn, this is what the price increases looked like about two years ago in May of 2006. And you could see that most of home prices, single home prices, were actually moving up practically everywhere in Southern California. The green indicates that these were fairly high increases, double-digit increases in the values of home. If we take a look at what it looks like from last summer, you can see the picture has changed pretty dramatically. And what the pink and what the deeper pink areas are indicating now are that we are actually seeing price declines. And I'm sure all of you are very aware of this. The Inland Empire has seen price declines on the order of 25% to 30% on average from last year. Los Angeles County has seen price declines on the order of about 20%. Sales are down, but also prices are down as well. Now, what this has done, if we go to the next slide, to the apartment market, is that this is the first year, last year is the first year where we have now seen the monthly house payment come down for an average-priced home in L.A. County. Rents continue to move up, although not as much as they have moved up in, say, 2005 and 2006. They only grew by about 3% last year. But the monthly housing payment is coming down. This year it'll come down even more because housing prices have fallen even more, and that's the primary reason why the house payment now is actually starting to converge towards, towards the rents. It won't converge completely, and we, this will take a long process. It's going to take several years. But what we are seeing is that the markets are returning to a more, they're correcting. The housing market is correcting, and prices are actually coming down. Okay, turning to the L.A. County housing, the apartment market, what we are seeing is that occupancy levels are still very high. They're almost 97% throughout the county. Rents have gone up, but not as much as in previous years. Rents are actually slowing in terms of their increases. But they did go up about 3% last year for the same apartment. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that rents are still quite high. They're especially high in the West L.A. area, where the average monthly rent is 2,200. Rents in L.A. County are the third highest in California. They rank only behind San Francisco and San Jose. And, but there is quite a bit of diversity in the rents across the different submarkets of L.A. County. The West Side is still very expensive, followed by Hollywood. Pasadena and Burbank actually saw rent increases fairly substantial this year, this past year, and their rents have been moving up. But there are other areas where the rents actually did not move up a great deal, such as the San Gabriel Valley in East L.A. If we go to the next slide, you'll see what the effect has been in the past year in terms of vacancy rates. Apartment supply is still very tight, but actually, it's improving. Vacancy rates went up last year, and not by a lot, but they did go up. And part of this is due to the fact that we have had more than 6,000 new apartment units were completed last year and came online. And this helped to improve the vacancy rates so that we're moving, we have incredibly tight vacancy rates in L.A. County. I mean, it's very difficult to find apartments. But actually, they have improved in the last year. The market has helped. Also, condo conversions really slowed down, and really almost came to a grinding halt. And so that has helped in terms of preserving apartments and, and increasing the vacancy rates. Okay, so if we go to the next slide, then, I would like to show, though, where the vacancies are occurring. If we look at properties that were built before 1980, what this map shows is that if it's green, it indicates that it has a vacancy rate that would be, say, 5% or higher, which means that it's easy probably to move into these apartments. If it is sort of in that yellow area, these are tight vacancy rates. They're on the order of about, or the gold area, they're less than 2%, less than 3%. And if it's in the red area, those are incredibly tight vacancy rates, and those are less than 1% of those apartments are vacant. Now, what we're seeing here is that this is to look at the vacancy rates by the age of the property, and these are as of the end of last year, which is our most recent data. And what we have here is that you can see that where the vacancy rates are low in these properties that have generally are older, older apartment buildings, is in the outlying areas, things are still incredibly tight, more in the San Fernando Valley, they're incredibly tight in these buildings, but also even in the major parts of L.A. County. If we go to the next slide, these are new developments. These are buildings that have been built since 2000. And here you can see that the vacancy rates here are not only above 4% and 5% in some areas, in the Hollywood area, in these buildings now, the vacancy rates are actually greater than 10%. And what we're really seeing here is an issue of affordability, in that the more affordable apartments, the vacancies are still incredibly tight. These tend to be apartment buildings that were built before 1980. In the more recent apartment buildings, these buildings tend to have apartments that are at the higher end, and where the rents are considerably higher than in the older apartments. And we're seeing that it's taking longer actually to lease up these apartment buildings, the newer buildings. And you can also see from the map where much of the new construction has been occurring. It's been occurring in downtown L.A. It's been occurring in the Hollywood area, the San Fernando Valley. And we're also starting to see more new apartment development in the Pasadena Tri-Cities areas. Okay, so turning to the highlights from 2007, apartment demand for apartments slowed down quite a bit. This is with the slowing of the economy, and also with the increase in new supply of apartments. That's, the good news is that we have had quite a few new apartments that have come online. But the occupancies are still tight. They're especially tight in older buildings, and certain areas of the city where there has not been a lot of new construction, such as the San Gabriel Valley. Monthly rents have moved up, but not as much as in previous years. I think that that's really the good news, that rents are starting to stabilize, and so rents increased about 3%. We will be having more new units coming online in 2007. Almost 7,000 new apartments, or, I'm sorry, this should be 2008. Almost 7,000 new apartments will be coming online in 2008, many of these in the downtown area, the Hollywood area, and the San Fernando Valley area. The next slide shows, though, that for this cycle now, we are seeing that L.A. County rent increases are slowing, that we're coming off of that rather torrid period of high rent increases to sort of more slower rent increases, and we expect this to continue. And then finally, in terms of our outlook, which is on the last, the next slide, the economy is slowing clearly due to the credit crunch and due to the housing downturn. And we're seeing apartment, occupancy should remain high in L.A. County, especially in the older apartment buildings, but we are seeing that the rent increases are slowing. And part of the reason why the rent increases are slowing is because there is a shadow market out there now of individual houses and condos for lease. These are being done by individuals who are choosing not to sell into this market, but are leasing their apartments, are leasing their condos, and this is competing with the apartment market. But it's also serving to relieve some of the pressure that's been on the apartment market, because people are leasing many of these condos, especially in downtown L.A. And then finally, where the new apartment supply is, is probably the greatest, is going to be in downtown L.A. It's in Hollywood and the San Fernando Valley. Most of this new supply will be high-end apartments. So that is the outlook. The markets keep changing. They're very dynamic, and I am happy, and if we go to the last slide, if you need any additional information, I'm happy to provide it. And, but I just wanted to give you this kind of a snapshot of where we are in terms of the apartment markets this year, because they have changed quite a bit in the last year, mainly due to the economy. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Council President Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Dr. Conway, and thank you, Madam President, as well. We appreciate you presenting this very timely and always exhaustive and in good sense report to us. As colleague and I were just kind of joking, you know, we know that things are bad, so it's kind of, well, this report is telling us what we know, that it's pretty bad out there. But you also showed us, I think, a couple of the silver linings of what is happening. Three takeaways that I certainly had from this were that rents are stabilizing, which is something so important as our constituents face the inflation that they're facing from gas and food and all the other cost of living increases that they've experienced. Secondly, that we're actually getting a good number of units built finally in this city, it sounds like. And that's, I think, when we were supposed to be building 10,000 units a year of housing overall during the 90s, we built about 5,000 units a year, and we fell about 50,000 units behind. It's making up for some of that. But third, I did hear also that there's an affordability gap, that a lot of the units that are being built are not commensurate with what people can afford. Is that a fair takeaway as well?
I think that that is a fair takeaway, yes. There is a real need for affordable units. It remains probably one of the most challenging, the greatest challenges in the rental market, yes, and workforce, housing units.
Yeah, and that middle piece is also, I know we've taken our pension funds, for instance, and we've invested with companies now that are trying to do for-sale workforce, which is a very difficult piece to do, because the way subsidies are set up from the federal government, state government, are really for median incomes, which they expect to be much higher in other cities, like 70-plus thousand. In San Francisco, here, it's in the 30s, and it's very difficult to find that financing pencil something out. But let me ask you this. I know in your recommendations, you talked about what some of the private companies are doing, land purchasing, consolidation, as strategies in this tougher marketplace. Any ideas what we should be doing from the public sector? I mean, we're looking at the possibility of some land banking, trying to continue our subsidies. I know in the budget that's been proposed to us, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, ironically, in the worst year ever, folks, has been zeroed out. The general fund contribution is zero this year after almost a decade of building that up. But, you know, certainly, our ability to respond where the marketplace can't in building affordable units right now, coupled with maybe land prices being somewhat more affordable, do you see that?
Exactly. That was what I was going to suggest, is that we are starting to see now that landowners are coming down in their prices, and they have not for really the last five years. There are going to be some opportunities that will be coming. They're not quite there yet. There is this disconnect between the buyers and the sellers, and getting financing is critical. But I totally agree with you that land acquisition is key, and trying to preserve some land for maybe more affordable housing would certainly be very beneficial to L.A. County in the future years.
Great.
Public-private partnerships are also very helpful in terms of infill development, mixed-use development. These are unique opportunities, but there are, there are some private companies that are very interested in this and in working with the city in order to try to create workforce housing units. And so I think that, again, it's going to be many small increments that will get us there. It's not going to be one huge sweeping change, and the council obviously will be balancing many different priorities.
Well, thank you so much for that. One last comment, which I know, as we saw, the market's completely changed, and there's not condo conversions coming to us for all sorts of reasons. But one of the city regulations, which looks at the vacancy rate, as if a vacancy rate is low enough, there should not be condo conversions approved, because we see that pressure on the rental marketplace being even more extreme. These numbers are very important and very good for us to look at, because I think out there, we're seeing them well below the thresholds that we've set for stopping some of those condo conversions, though the market's kind of correcting itself in that area as well. So thank you again for the presentation. We really appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
There's an initiative coming up on the ballot in June, and it's called Proposition 98. And it appears to be looking into re-changing... 98, and it appears to be looking into re-changing how California would be allowed to have rent control throughout the state of California. Are you familiar at all with that proposition?
I must confess that I'm not, actually.
Oh, okay. The reason why I ask you is because obviously, if there were a massive change like that, it would affect tomorrow's presentations that you might have when it comes to housing, because obviously, we do have rent control in certain areas, being exercised in certain parts of our city, and certain parts of the state of California, and certainly affects certain communities' abilities to have accessible rents, people who have been there for a while, et cetera. So I was just curious if you had studied that yet.
We haven't had an opportunity yet, and, but, what can I say? Rents were incredibly low for the early part of this decade, I mean, in terms of rent increases. The rents have never been low, but the rent increases have been low. They shot up quite a bit in 2005, 2006, and I'm relieved to see that actually, that the rent increases now, once again, will be fairly low, and in some instances, less than actually what is afforded by rent control.
Now, what kind of housing stock do we need to add in the city of Los Angeles, just round figures, in order for us to keep up with the demand, or how far, how far behind are we to date, and then what kind of rate are we growing at as a city?
Roughly about 10,000 units a year is sort of what would be sort of a minimum, yes, in terms of, that has slowed down in recent years because the economy has slowed down and the loss of jobs. But we expect this to be fairly temporary, this year, maybe next year, and then we expect that things will be picking up again, but roughly on the order of 10,000 new units a year.
So basically, what that tells us, I think, is regardless of what happens, whether the economy is a bit slow, or it's going well, or what have you, we happen to be a region and a city that has a housing demand that continues to come toward us.
That's right.
Instead of saying, oh, we can take a snapshot in time and it freezes. It doesn't freeze, right, as far as the demand for more housing?
LA is still a very, very desirable place to live, and as long as we continue to have a diversified economy and continue to enjoy, you know, reasonable job growth, people want to move here.
And the weather.
And the weather, of course, yes. Can't beat it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you for your report on this here. Just to go back maybe 20 years, what was the trend, if you've looked at over the years? Because there was a period in the 1990s where there was no development in housing. Could you explain that, so we look back?
Exactly. There was actually overdevelopment in apartments in the late 80s, in that we think 10,000 units a year now is a lot, but in the late 80s, they were building more than 50,000 units of apartments each year, and in that time, they were actually overbuilding some of the units. And then when the 1990 recession had, which really impacted LA very hard because of the defense layoffs, you see, we had a tremendous excess supply of apartments, as well as single-family homes, and it took almost, well, between five to eight to 10 years to work through that inventory.
And that's where we are today now, as we, that's, that period of, the last seven to 10 years has been the building period?
The last seven to 10 years, they've actually been building condominiums, but the builders have cut back. They have never built as many units as they did in the late 80s, where the building has primarily been focused has been out in Riverside and San Bernardino.
Right.
That's where they've been building a lot of new homes, mostly for low to moderate-income families.
And not just in the inland empire, but around Southern California. Where else in the country are challenges like this, if you study?
Florida has some similar challenges. Las Vegas, oddly enough, also has some challenges, because they've become sort of an inland port, and in addition, of course, to the gaming industry. So there have been a lot of people moving to Las Vegas, they've been building a lot of housing. They overbuilt, actually, so they can rest for a while, and have plenty of housing for people. But Florida has been challenging. The East Coast is very challenging, building around Washington DC, New York, or Boston, where these are older communities, there isn't a lot of available land, and that's what we have in LA County now. We don't have a lot of huge land parcels.
Right. Dr. Conway, most important, who's going to win the track meet this Saturday, UCLA or SE?
Well, SE, of course. I mean, of course, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Han, I mean, Ms. Han, Ms. Han, sorry. I was thinking, I was so, I was thinking about Bruins and why UCLA was going to win, so I was a little distracted. Ms. Han.
Thank you, thank you. Well, you know, I really appreciate this report, and colleagues, I just wanted to use this opportunity to say that, you know, these problems are really, you know, circular. The downturn in the housing market has an amazing effect on a couple of areas. One, very key, that a lot of people don't realize, but because of the downturn in the housing, imports at the Port of Los Angeles have been down. Why? The number-one import coming into the Port of Los Angeles is, what do you think?
Wood, construction.
Furniture.
Furniture, right.
Furniture is the number-one import. So when people are not buying houses and wanting to, you know, put furniture in their house, that, we see that immediately out on the docks. And you can always tell when there's a downturn in the movement out at the port, that this is what's happening. Well, what happens when there's less goods coming into the port? That affects jobs. And the number-one industry in Los Angeles is the international trade industry. So this has a huge impact all the way around. A lot of people think, well, it's just a little downturn in the housing market, but it really does have an amazing impact on a lot of these things that we come to take for granted, particularly as it relates to trade coming through the Port of Los Angeles. So I just took this opportunity to say, it does impact everything that we're doing. A lot of people don't realize why jobs are slow at the port right now, and it has a direct impact to the housing market.
I totally agree with you, Ms. Han, and thank you for pointing that out. And where it's really impacting a lot of those jobs is in the inland empire, in the warehouses, in the distribution centers, because the imports are down. Yes.
Mr. Alarcon is our next speaker, then, Mr. Rosendahl.
Hi.
Hi.
You hear a lot of facts about the homeownership rate in Los Angeles. Do you know what the homeownership rate is in Los Angeles?
I think it's approximately 65% to...
65% of what?
65% of all, oh, in Los Angeles, I'm sorry. In the city of LA, it's only about 50%, because we have almost half renters, and then we have half homeowners, but in LA County, it's actually higher.
Where are you getting that statistic?
About 50%.
Yeah, because I've heard it as low as 31%. I know my district's 55%, and some districts are, I think Ms. Perry's is 23%, Mr. Eric Garcetti's is 28%. What, where are you getting your?
We're getting our statistics basically from the Census Bureau, which, but it's about 50.
You sure? The city of Los Angeles is?
The larger city of LA, which would include, yeah, the MSA. It includes San Fernando, Long Beach.
But it includes Long Beach?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, I, okay.
Not the inner city. The inner city would have a much lower homeownership rate.
Well, I, I'm trying to get a good figure on that. I thought it was 31 to 40%, but depending on which report, and with the foreclosure crisis, I'm assuming it's actually lower than that. But the reason I ask that is, we keep talking about rentals as the be-all and end-all to save people who can't afford other housing. I just noticed that in the San Fernando Valley, where my district is, it's about $1,500 a month for rent, and you could probably buy a house with a 5% down and get a mortgage rate that's about $1,500. Right now, I bumped into a young man who bought a house for $275 in Silmar on a 10,000-square-foot lot.
Excellent.
What concerns would you have about creating a have-and-have-not society where nobody owns an asset that they can rely on when they have an issue in life?
Well, I think that that's changing. I think that there were definitely certain excesses in the last boom in the housing market, and, but I think that that is correcting at this time, and it's sort of back to basics.
What do you mean correcting, and what do you mean excesses?
That, that actually, I think...
You can hold my time, please.
I'm sorry, that, that what we're seeing is that banks have really tightened up their lending criteria, that these sort of exotic loans are no longer available, that people have to put money down into the property, that they have to have proof of documentation that they actually can afford the monthly payment, and that we're back to sort of more basics, traditional basic home owning.
Has, have your, the academics that you work with in developing these references, have they looked at comparable cities where the rental, the proportion of rental far exceeds the proportion of homeownership? And what does, what deteriorating effects that has on the quality of life in your city? And shouldn't we be focusing on homeownership as a value, as opposed to spreading the rental?
Well, I think that we have, you know, first of all, there are studies that have been looking at that, and I think that you bring up a great point, and that is sort of the quality of life, and that I think one of the, that homeownership really does add stability to a community. And I think, though, that in some instances, in 2006, 2007, we sort of swung a little too far in terms of maybe qualifying people for homeownership, that may not have been able to actually afford them.
Well, I don't think we did that.
The credit companies.
I think certain rip-off banks did that, but, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, as a value, shouldn't a city like Los Angeles try to do more about creating homeownership, as opposed to expanding constantly, every time we talk about fixing the housing crisis, we talk about rental, rental, rental. We're paying $200,000 to $400,000 at the CRA per unit of apartment, we could pretty much buy a house for that price, and create stability for a lifetime.
Yes, definitely.
Why the focus on rental?
It's not the focus on rentals, and what has been happening in the last five years has been that not just LA County, but especially Riverside, San Bernardino County, have been focusing on homeownership. They've mostly been building houses.
But nobody, there's no jobs over there?
There are jobs in the inland empire, not just through international...
Last time I checked, the Moreno Valley is, has a huge vacancy rate amongst homes.
There are problems right now, definitely, because of the downturn in the economy.
And that's within the last five years.
Well, there was overbuilding that also went on. There was overbuilding of homes in Riverside and San Bernardino, so...
Well, there was overbuilding of homes without creating the job, the job base, the permanent job base. There are construction jobs temporarily, after six months, they're gone, the workers buy the houses, but then they have to find a job in LA.
That's exactly right.
And then they, they give up on their house, because gas prices are approaching $5, and in some cases have hit $5, and now they can't afford to live 90 miles away.
Yes, or because in some cases...
I would just like to see a lot more focus on homeownership as a proportion, as a strategy, as a value for the city of Los Angeles. And I think we can do a far better job in using our public dollars toward creating homeownership opportunities than keep giving it up to create smaller units of housing with about the same price, $1,500 in San Fernando Valley.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. A very interesting discussion, and thank you for coming before our City Council. I represent the West Side in the context of everything west of the 405, Mo Hall in on the top, with the wonderful mountains, Brentwood in the Palisades through West LA, Mar Vista, Venice, Delray in Palms, Westchester, Playa Delray, Playa Vista, and LAX. That's me. I have in the heart of my district, a whole city called Santa Monica. I have a big strip of Culver City, and I have Marina Del Rey. So I have three other governmental jurisdictions, vibrant and alive, doing their own thing in the midst of the 11th District. 2008, right now, we have the most gridlocked district in the city. Nobody worked together. Santa Monica said in the 80s, we're going to become, you know, because they changed this Prop 13 business, the tax system different, so sales tax would be the way you can finance local government. Santa Monica intensely focused inside, became a great job capital. It is the job capital, the West Side, but all my streets are gridlocked everywhere. 200,000 cars come in in the morning to go to Santa Monica. Some go to West LA as well. Culver City has a Costco right on the edge of Venice, down the strip of Venice Boulevard, on the edge of Washington Place and Washington Boulevard. Okay, so this is my reality in my district. I have no affordable housing anymore, I can't keep affordable housing, the price of land has gone through the roof. Even with this recession we're in, having the ocean, having the fresh breeze is the best property in the city, okay? Because of the air. How do I keep affordable housing on the West Side? All my apartments are threatened by condo conversions, which is a nice little profit for a developer at the expense of losing my middle class and my working class. So if I lose the middle class and the working class, and they have to go work in the district, the gridlock will remain forever. Any thoughts from your perspective on how I can deal with that as an elected official?
Well, first of all, I'm a great admirer of your work, and in terms of the initiatives that you have put forward, to try to deal with this, because you are totally right in that it is the most desirable city, part of the city to live in, and that is where a lot of new job creation is happening, and, but also, you do have to work with these different governments, and affordability is the main issue. The only suggestion that we might make at the LUSK Center would be in terms of these private-public partnerships in the area of workforce housing. There are infill developments where workforce houses are feasible, sometimes they're a little bit higher density, but, but on the other hand, when you do the trade-offs and you try to preserve affordable housing, to preserve the workforce that is there, you know, some of those trade-offs actually really make sense.
I mean, LAUSD is working with me on it, I'm thrilled. They're going to build some, I'm going to support them. They want to do one in the Webster Middle School, which would be for teachers and middle-class people. That I'm a big supporter of. But the other day, they do this 1818, which is a statewide law, that just shoves more dam density, but no affordability in the picture. But I can't stop it, it's the state law.
But, but I think that there are, that, you know, there are proposals that are coming forth, it's not going to be a flood of them, it'll be a few here, a few there, but, you know, as we work together, I think that, that at least we can stabilize things, and try to hold on to the affordable affordability that we do have that's in that area. But I am a great admirer of your work.
Well, thank you so much for saying that, and if there's any advice you can give me offline with my district and my issue, I'd love to hear it, because I want to keep my middle class and working class near the ocean, too.
The one thing that may help also is mass transit. If we can get, you know, the exposition line coming over to Culver City, that, that may help also.
You see, I want to get that green line into the airport. I can't believe they stopped at 1994, a mile and a half away from the airport. It's outrageous, irresponsible behavior, and I hope to get it in there as we do the modernization.
That would help also, because then people can move into the jobs from more affordable places.
And then we would go up Lincoln Boulevard with the green line, into Santa Monica, and down into the South Bay Galleria. So these are my, part of my visions of mass transit.
Very good.
Well, thank you so much for what you're doing, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. No other speakers, we appreciate very much the report. Thank you for answering questions. We have one public comment card on this as well. Suma Dog, if you'd like to come forward on this item?
Yes, I wish Councilmember Alarcon were in the room, because I'm speaking basically just to try to school him and respond to him. He's so uninformed, and I'm really just tired of Richard Alarcon and the way he's just... Let me explain something. We did try to do something about giving people homeownership, it was called subprime loans, okay? And how did that go? Not very well. So let's not bite off more than we can chew here. Here's the fiscal, here's what's happening, people. The city of Los Angeles did nothing but approve expensive luxury housing all over town through the, I was here for years, condo conversions, you're ignoring all the laws, you're not giving the amenities downtown that are needed, you got a city of expensive housing. Of course, Richard Alarcon, nobody can afford the housing here with the job market. Let me tell you, people, we got inflation, with oil at $119 on Friday, that's going to be the whole deal right there, because all the people's money is going to be going into the gas tank, they're not going to have money to spend on the goods, they're not going to be able to pay their mortgages, they're not going to be able to afford this housing, they're not going to be able to live in Los Angeles when you're tripling trash collection fees and coming up with new taxes and fees all the time. No one can afford to live here. Meanwhile, you're not building the amenities that are needed to stimulate downtown. We had Jack Kaiser here, that you brought in last week, who said that the foreclosure is going to be deeper and wider in areas that we weren't aware of yet. It's way worse, and I haven't even gone to my notes yet. Okay, the high oil prices, again, stores, you know, a lot of the companies were basing their profitability on $85 a gallon, so the restaurants, stores, they're not, we're going to see stores closing, that means jobs lost. You know, y'all sat here and made an Eli Broad city for his wife and all their cronies to fly in from all over the world and say, isn't LA so fancy schmancy? Let's have a wine and cheese party at the Grand Avenue Party. Well, you forgot about amenities, you forgot about Staples Center, you forgot about Costco, you forgot about Best Buy, you forgot about 7-Eleven, you forgot about T-shirts, you got, there's not enough rooms on the traffic, you got all kinds of density and luxury, and there's not enough luxury, there's no money, you did it all wrong, you did it all wrong!
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doug. And we thank you very much, Doctor, for your report and for the great comments and discussion. We look forward to... We look forward to taking some of the suggestions moving forward with them. Thank you. We will go ahead and open the roll and, oh, we'll just note and file that one without objection. Okay, next item, please.
Item 20, called special by Councilmember Weesar.
Mr. Weesar, item number 20.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, what's before us today is a new ordinance that would codify the fraud and abuse unit, fraud, waste and abuse unit in the Controller's Office, but would also lay out how it will work with the Ethics Office, LAPD, and City Attorney's Office, which also play a role in doing investigations for potential fraud, waste, and abuse. Back some time ago, as you know, the Controller opened up this unit, and when it came before the audits committee, both Councilwoman Grul and myself introduced a motion because we were concerned that the public would be a little confused as to where they can go to report any fraud, waste, and abuse. And so we asked them to get together to come up with some way that we are not duplicating efforts and also a way that the public can be made more aware about how to report these items. So I simply wanted to have these departments come up to explain what this new ordinance is so that we all could move forward a lot more aware about how we could work with this new unit. Is the Ethics Office here and the Controller's Office?
I am.
City Attorney's Office? And LAPD, I believe. Please hold my time. Hi, I'm welcome, and thank you all very, very much for putting the time and effort to create this ordinance. I know it was a lot of work. Came before the audits committee a number of times, and I think we finally find something that works for everyone. So if you could just first briefly introduce yourselves and then someone could just briefly explain what this ordinance does and how you will all work together now that this ordinance will be in place, if passed, when passed today. Thank you. Where we start over here, if you can introduce yourself?
Lieutenant Dennis Shari with Commercial Crimes Division of the Police Department.
Thanks.
Leanne Pelham, Executive Director of the City Ethics Commission.
Brian Young, Special Investigator with the Controller's Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Unit.
Lonnie Eldridge, Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you. So what I mean, the City Attorney, maybe you could briefly explain to the council what this ordinance does. Thank you.
Sure, Councilmember. This, I'm Lonnie Eldridge, Deputy City Attorney, also General Counsel of the Controller's Office. In response to a direction from the Audit and Governmental Efficiency Committee, we submitted and drafted an ordinance, the revised ordinance is in front of you, submitted April 11th, 2008. What this ordinance does, it takes into account feedback from the Controller's Office from other affected agencies such as the Ethics Commission. What this ordinance does, it codifies the Controller's existing fraud, waste, and abuse unit and sets out the responsibilities and the duties of the unit. And I'll just touch on a couple of highlights. The first section of the ordinance, 20.60, sets forth the purpose of the unit, which is to identify and prevent losses of city resources and to act as a deterrent to further acts of fraud, waste, and abuse. The next section makes clear that any employee, department, or citizen, resident of the city can report waste, fraud, and abuse to this unit, or the Controller's Office can internally generate these complaints, investigations. 20.60.2, that's an important section talking about the overlap and referral parts of the unit. One issue that was raised, of course, is that other city departments also look into waste, fraud, and abuse and other issues, such as the City Ethics Commission looking at its jurisdiction and its, its current hotline responsibilities. In 20.60.2, we discuss that the Waste, Fraud, and Abuse Unit must have meetings on a monthly or otherwise agreed basis with the other agencies of the city, including Police Department and City Ethics Commission, to make sure that the potential issues that need to be referred between the agencies are done properly. In 20.60.3, we point out that the unit by itself has no independent criminal responsibility, that to participate in a criminal investigation, they have to do it under the aegis of somebody with criminal or law enforcement responsibilities, such as the DA or the City Attorney's Office or the City Ethics Commission. Cooperation between the units is covered in 20.60.4. It makes clear that other city departments are expected to cooperate with this unit. That may take the form of providing information in response to requests or perhaps staff on a limited basis as the needs and abilities of the departments allow. In 20.60.5, the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission's whistleblower hotline is spelled out, and it makes clear that the whistleblower hotline of the Waste, Fraud, and Abuse Unit should not overlap or be promoted in a way that might induce more overlap with the Ethics Commission's hotline. And then finally, the last section of the ordinance makes clear that the unit's investigations are to be kept confidential unless there is some other need.
Great, thank you. But I think the most important piece of this is that there's now some way that in the event the public or anybody calls one of these hotlines, either the Ethics Department or the Ethics Commission or the Controller's Office and the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Unit, that you will work together to find out what type of complaint it is and get it to the appropriate place. Is that accurate? Or, I'm just making that statement. I think that's the most important part of this ordinance. And is the Ethics Commission anything you might want to share with us, Ms. Pelham?
Thank you, Councilmember. Obviously, I think this is, it's an important ordinance in that it reminds all of us about the importance of collaborating effectively. I mean, clearly, listening to the budget discussions yesterday, nobody wants to be duplicating efforts. And so I think this is something that will be a marker for ensuring that there is ongoing discussion. You know, we have a mandated charter, a charter mandated whistleblower hotline. We get about 350 some odd complaints a year. About 10% of those are referrals, less than 10% are referrals to other agencies. But it's even if there are 10% of them that has some overlap, we want to make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes. So we didn't initially understand the full need for an ordinance, but I think as it's crafted now, we have no issues with that.
Great, thank you. LAPD, Controller's Office, anything you want to share?
We're fine with the ordinance as it's been amended and there's a mandatory meeting. I think as long as the parties are talking to one another, the issues can be worked out.
Great, great. Thanks.
I just want to say that, you know, I think it helps provide a little bit of clarity, you know, as to the purpose of the fraud unit, that we exist and that there is an independent investigative unit that is there to look at, you know, fraud and waste in the city and that there is an avenue that it can be reported and it will be looked at and every, every complaint that comes in is evaluated. The ordinance also helps, you know, explain a little bit more about, you know, what the process is, the examination and investigative process. And it also talks about, you know, it helps the city as a whole, kind of defines as to, you know, the purpose of the fraud unit and that, you know, cooperation is, is greatly, you know, appreciated. And it's, it's a valuable ordinance to have in place.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this. And I think in considering today's budgetary situation, it's even more important that we make it easier and more understandable for the public to know where they can go to get the help and that they are getting the help. The Audit Governmental Efficiency Committee will be reviewing this within six to nine months to see how it's working out. And thank you again for your cooperation and for getting it to this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weesar. Mr. Lavange?
Thank you very much. Good morning. How's everybody? Good afternoon. Good morning still in Honolulu. Just over the course of time, how much fraud has there been in the city that you know? I know our biggest problem is the stealing of copper wire, theft of public property. Does this deal with any of that?
Well, actually, the fraud unit, we've had a number of investigations that have been prosecuted with both the District Attorney and the City Attorney's Office.
Just introduce yourself for the record again.
Sure. My name is Brian Young. I'm a Special Investigator with the, with the Controller's Fraud Unit.
Right.
And we've conducted a number of investigations that have resulted in criminal filings at the District Attorney level as well as the City Attorney's Office.
But the current problem of theft of, of copper wire, are you familiar with that?
I've, I've read about it. I've, I've heard about it in the newspaper.
Yeah, it's over a million dollars. You know, I don't know. I want to make sure, are we, how, we're looking inside City Hall or outside City Hall? Are we looking at field offices around the city? Are we looking at public property everywhere?
Well, you know, one thing, you know, one of the reasons that we're all here together is, is to make sure that, you know, that we coordinate. You know, if, if there's fraud that occurs, you know, within the city, at city resources, you know, then, then the fraud unit is probably, you know, the best place to start. You know, there's also crimes that may occur outside the city. It could be a theft that you're talking about that might be more appropriate for, you know, for a local police department to investigate.
Sure, yeah.
So, you know, that's why we, we, you know, have in place an avenue to, to be able to share, you know, the complaints that come to our office and to refer them to the Ethics Commission as well as Los Angeles Police.
Does anybody have a dollar figure of what in the last 10 years there may have been? You know, waste could be a subjective thought. Is that right, Ms. Pelham?
Yes.
I mean, it could be subjective, so whether it's waste or not, but I, I do remember the most famous waste of a Senator Boxer talked about, like a $400 hammer. Is that right? Do we remember that from federal government stuff? Do we have a dollar figure on the waste that maybe the city has had or the fraud or the, what would it, but abuse is maybe subjective too. I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of this effort. I just want to make sure we focus right and then we want to, if someone does cross the line, we want to make sure they are dealt with appropriately by law. But also, I don't want to make everybody who's serving the city feel or lives in the city feel that there's rampant waste, you know, like rampant waste of what is the limited tax dollars and the very valuable resources that we have. Does anybody have a dollar figure? If 16 Minutes was here right now and they put a microphone in front of them, they said, "Tell me, how much waste has there been in Los Angeles?"
You know, honestly, I couldn't put a number on it. I could give you some examples.
You'll give me an example then.
One example is...
I don't know if Mike Wallace would be that kind to you, but okay.
Well, one example is a matter came to our attention. It was a hotline tip. It was an anonymous tip, and we looked into it, and we quantified that it was about a million dollars. That management decision was based on the purchase of equipment that probably should not have been purchased.
Right. Was there prosecution on that?
No, it's, it's not prosecution because the difference between fraud and waste is fraud is more intentional. You know, that's probably the key thing, whereas waste, it might be, you know, a poor management decision, it might be, you know, a careless expenditure of funds, but, you know, it might not rise to a level of prosecution. If it's not an intentional act, not intentional wrongdoing, it might be a waste of funds, and that's something that, that the Fraud and Waste Unit does look at.
Right.
You know, in addition, you know, the Fraud Unit also does proactive reviews. We do some data mining. We've looked at, you know, areas in regards to, another example is city departments that are required to have, vendors are supposed to have tax ID numbers, business tax ID numbers. Well, we identified a number of departments where vendors, you know, conducted business with the city, but they may not have had the applicable tax ID number. So you look at those numbers, you know, to make sure that Office of Finance has all the information that they need, that there's a connect between, you know, the city's database with business that they do with vendors, that they have the appropriate tax ID numbers, that they're filing, you know, the correct tax forms, and that the amount of tax is remitted to the city. I mean, and you're talking about, you know, a large, a large amount of money.
Anyway, I thank you. I just hope, I thank you, Madam President. I just hope you report to the committee from time to time on the activities so people have a clear understanding of what our challenges are and how effective this unit will be. Mr. Weesar, thank you because it's your leadership that brought this about, along with the City Controller, the Ethics Director, and our City Attorney and everyone else. Thank you, Madam President.
Thanks, Mr. Lavange. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Madam President. And I, I just wanted to stand up and support as well, I think, the, the concept and the idea that came about, it's probably now, I think, when Mayor Vera Gosa was a City Council Member, that we began this process with the Controller and Jack Weiss and others of us who were supportive of that, and that it became clear that the concept was a good one, but how do we make sure, as you all have outlined in your presentation, that there wasn't conflicting responsibilities and reporting, and then in fact, if there was an existence of waste, fraud, and abuse, that it would be appropriately referred to the right departments for LAPD to investigate or for the City Attorney or Ethics Commission similarly to prosecute or move into the right direction. And I think that in this instance, and we heard in committee yesterday, in Budget Committee, some of the successes of this Waste, Fraud, and Abuse Unit, and in fact, pointed out some of the proactive things that the Controller's Office is doing and not really waiting until someone calls, but really doing, I can't remember what they used the title of, how do you?
Data mining?
Data mining, thank you very much. It was a long day yesterday in Budget. Data mining, right? Mr., you remember that, Mr. Smith, that part of it? Yeah, data mining, which was, I think, demonstrated the necessity and the importance of this position. And I'm so happy that all of you have worked together to design something that is going to be supportive of, of one another in this ordinance. And thank you, Mr. Weesar, for your leadership in making sure that this, this happened and to be able to do that. And part of the Budget Committee yesterday was also reporting back, Mr. Lavange, on effectiveness. The dollar figure actually was asked, and that was, I think the Controller indicated it was very hard to, to put a figure necessarily to that in some of the issues that had come forward to her unit. But I think this was a, a great addition to the city of Los Angeles. I want to just thank the departments that are here and to encourage approval as well of this item before us, this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. All right, there are no further speakers in the queue. Public hearing has already been held in this matter at the committee level. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item.
And Madam President, for the record, that ordinance will go over one week.
All right. I believe we also have to reconsider item one. Who requested that? Mr. Lavange?
No, I think Mr. Barsetti.
Okay, it was a request from Building and Safety and, and CD1, and...
No, we voted on it, but they want to re-vote and continue.
They want to reconsider item one and continue it for one week. That comes from CD1. First-time reconsideration. Okay, can we open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That was on the reconsideration. And now, do we need to vote for, okay, all right, fine. That'll be continued for one week. Thank you. All right, next item.
Item 42, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. We'd like to refer this item back to committee for further consideration.
All right, you want to open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Item 45, called special for cards from the public.
All right. Our speakers will be Arnold Sachs, Zuma Doge to start.
This would be a perfect item for your new fraud and waste and, and whatever you've just approved for them to investigate because the amount of money you're spending on all these special occasions is fraudulent and wasteful and something that should be looked into by your new authority in the Audits Division. By the way, who, what actions will be taken when they find something wrong? Thank you for your time and your effort and your answers, never mind your efforts.
Mr. Zuma Doge? Mr. Zuma Doge? All right, last call. Now we will switch over to Sharon Brewer and Miriam Fogler in the San Fernando Valley.
She had, you've made her wait here too long, so naturally she left. So I'm Miriam Fogler. Can I start my time again?
Please proceed.
Thank you, thank you. As we're embarking on a budget crisis here, you're going ahead and going ahead and zapping it to the public, you know, and you were your employers, not the other way around. And this room and the other rooms should be all filled up. You people wouldn't do this in BS because I know you wouldn't. You know what you can get away when you can't. And the USC thing, all these things here that shouldn't be paid for, the St. Thomas, all these other, these things here is illegal. It's church and state and all this stuff has been paid for by their, by the schools themselves. All these things that could be covered and they're, and they shouldn't have the city be picking up the tab. There's so one day, there'll be another Howard Jarvis here, another Paul Gann. Hopefully, they'll wake up. People wake up here in the city of angels because they're taking you down. And when you could get hungry and you get tired of seeing all these special events being paid for by, for special interests, you'll be barking down here, you'll be coming down here and do something about this. Because when you're paying $5, $4, $5 a gallon and can't buy a loaf of bread or milk or butter, you're going to be down here fighting for your bread and butter, folks. It's going to affect you because these people are not being affected because they're making enough money that doesn't, it covers their expenses and they know by July 1st they're getting another raise. They know it that they can get away with this because the public is not doing nothing. When the public will wake up, then they will listen, they will do something about it. Until then, they're not. And I know how about the history throughout the, from the day of the Taro Babbel, that people rose up against him because he was doing the same thing you're doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. There are no further speaker cards on that item and no speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 46, called special for cards from the public.
Ron Sanger, if you are still here. All right, Mr. Sanger. Then we'll go back to Sharon Brewer, Miriam Fogler, and Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley.
Sharon left and you overstepped Donna Pearman, had the right to speak on number 45. You need to reconsider and have her speak on it before you just rubber stamp it. Come on, Donna, I can speak on 45.
Ma'am, you're on your time now. Donna has her own time.
Are you gonna, okay, can you start the clock?
So either use your time and then let Donna have her time.
Okay, can you start the clock because I was trying to get her to have the right to speak. Okay, I need to have two minutes here. Okay, number 46 is paying for the LA Fiesta Broadway, $146,977. And we don't even know how much of the money is going to come back to the city. This is outrageous. I mean, the part of your budget pride crisis going on here, folks. And like I said, the Taro Babbel, remember that in the Bible and the Bible explicitly says, repeats, and history repeats itself over and over. And it's not going to be a pretty sight. And I hope to God that reason and minds will take over and bring civility back to City Hall and Horseshoe and to stop this outrageous special events and all this and the leans against people who come here and try to make a life. And it's not right what you're doing. And the public is not going to allow it to continue when they get, when they wake up.
Next speaker is Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, I think you should also let me speak on number 45. My card was there and they even saw it. Anyway, I'm, let's see, I want to speak on number 46 right now, but I have to, I should speak on 45 because you'd open it up. Because of last Friday, you have lost your quorum, you had lots of fee waivers, especially the annual Shakespeare by the, oh, sorry, this wrong one. Now, this is a real ridiculous, the LA Fiesta Broadway, 2008, for $162,977, which you want to put up, $80,000 in general fund. How can you ask the city to pay such a huge amount? We don't get to see how the $82,977 is being spent. What could possibly cost so much? Certainly, the real large, certainly has a real large, a lot of people, you can get that amount to charging people going to that event. I heard it was attended by a huge amount of people. Instead, you have the CRA tear down people's property. How dare you do that to a nice Israeli Jew? But you wouldn't let Councilman Tom Labange hold that on the desk. You remembered for ruining that man's life. You should, should help him instead of waiving all these fees. You waived the LA Fiesta Broadway fee. Eminent domain has to stop and fee waivers have to stop. And I really think I should be able to speak on number 45, but I think, I know you have to open it up and then pretend to listen to me. Okay, goodbye.
Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue, no more speaker cards. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on this, please? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Clerk, we will go back and revisit and reopen number 45. Do we need to make a motion to do that? Motion for reconsideration on number 45, please, without objection. Please open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. And now let's invite our speaker, Donna-
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Now let's invite our speaker, Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley, to come back and speak on item number 45.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perry. That's really nice. Anyway, I'm sorry Sharon Brewer is not here to add the fees up. You made us stay so long that she left. We want, but you want to pass the fees quickly. We need to put a maritimes on these fee waivers. I'm now looking to see, yeah, moratorium. I'm now looking to see which council district wants a fee waiver. This time is Ms. Perry, Ms. Weezer, and Bernard Parks. We have the Angel City Jazz Festival for $1,188. St. Thomas Parish Festival for $1,000. Don't we have a separation of church and state? CSUN Run, Walk, and Roll, $7,241. Why are we paying for CSUN? First Annual Pet Fair, $3,500. The Summer Carnival and Block Party, $2,000. 26th Annual UNCF Walk for $5,306. University of Southern California, 125th Commencement Ceremony, $7,094. Why are we paying for it? Why isn't Southern Calif, US, Southern California University paying for it? Our city is paying for all these new tax hikes and trash fees, internet fees, higher meter fees, recreation fees, not heard in the pipeline, new sales tax, cutbacks in every area of our lives, but you still waive all these fees. You won't waive fees for people who really need it, probably won't have a fee waiver for that man who really need it, guy who came down here. How, and Israeli guy. How dare you fund these events but don't help people? You did a dog and pony show on Friday, so we have a lot of fee waivers. We have to put a moratorium on these fee waivers. We have to stop them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue. That's the last of the speaker cards. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And I believe we need to reconsider 46. Mr. Weezer?
Continue item 46 for one week, please.
All right, without objection, motion-
We can reconsider first and-
Motion for reconsideration to continue this item one week. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 51, called special for cards from the public.
Arnold Sacks and Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, good afternoon. Before you steamroll this agenda item through, it's a shame that Time Warner is going to be allowed to use access to the public right of way for free. I think they should be paying as a cable company, especially since, again, the budget shortage. And I'd just like to point out before you close the vote, there's only eight members in the chambers. Don't you need 10 for a quorum? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Zuma Dogg?
It doesn't matter, nobody votes anyone.
Mr. Zuma Dogg is not present, all right? No speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item 53, called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Zuma Dogg? He is not present, so we will go to Sharon Brewer in the San Fernando Valley.
She's not here.
All right, then we will go to Miriam Fogler in the San Fernando Valley.
Hello again. As I was going to say, you people should be put on notice like other workers. If you take, if you break a quorum, you should be docked or fired or something. You should have money deducted from your salaries. So what I'm saying is that these fee waivers, you just put them off today and I know you got to meet a deadline by 1:00 for your budget hearing, but these fee waivers cannot go on and on and on without having something that's going to backlash on the people here, the city workers, the politicians and the whole city. It's going to be coming, it's probably going to get worse and worse, folks, because they're going to be doing more and more waivers here because they think they can just keep drinking and drinking more and more. Like it says in the Bible, says we're going to be so drunk with the oil and eventually it's just going to come to a head end. So, people, you need to use your heads. You know that you need to feed your families and have roof over your heads.
Thank you very much.
Look what they're doing here with the fee waivers.
Donna Pearman, if you're still there. Donna Pearman, you have one minute.
Okay, yeah, I don't have that much to say. I think just hell just rose over. You passed over fee waivers till next week. I thought it was automatic, or I'm not sure what you're looking at, why you passed it over till next week. For chance, you might not pass it. Because of that, last Friday, you had lost your quorum, you have a lot of fee waivers, especially the annual Shakespeare by the Sea, $4,280. St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church Easter Festival, $5,358. Again, separation church and state, lesser amounts, Mother Day's banquet, $1,660. Southeast LA festivals, $1,521. Annual benefit, art, Ochen, $1,775. Community Ochen, block party, $1,778. And certainly, these are too many fee waivers, so I don't have much to say except that don't pass these fee waivers. Let them go to next week, too.
Thank you very much. End of our speaker cards, none in the queue. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item 54, called special for cards from the public.
We have one card from Mr. Zuma Dogg. Mr. Zuma Dogg, not present, all right? And no speakers in the queue. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item, please. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zion requests to be excused April 30th for personal business, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, June 6th for city business, and for the entire meeting of July 11th for city business. A motion is required.
Motion made without objection. Councilmember Zion is excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused May 7th for city business. That meets council policy.
Without objection.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused to leave at noon on May 7th for city business. A motion is required.
Motion without objection. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on November 26th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, Councilmember Garcetti is excused without objection.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused June 13th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused without objection.
Councilmember Gruehl requests to be excused May 27th for city business. That meets council policy.
Without objection.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at noon on May 16th for personal business. A motion is required.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Rosendahl.
That clears the desk.
All right, great. Members, are there any announcements?
Several months ago, we adjourned in memory of First Lady, Lady Bird Johnson. Just received a nice note from her daughters to thank us for the wonderful tributes that we sent to her and remember her mother. Wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? Could we all please rise for adjourning motions? On this side, do you have any adjourning motions? Ms. Han, do you have any? Okay, great. Okay, great. On this side, any adjourning motions? All right, I have an adjourning motion. I'm not sure if this has been done already. This is in memory of Robert Alexander Rodriguez and his godmother, Veronica Becerra. Asked that we do this to remember him.